Welcome to the City Council's June 9th Special City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to first introduce staff and City Council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council Member Kat Carlton, City Council Member Betsy Nash, and City Council Member Ray Mueller. Staff present include City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, interim City Attorney Kara Silver, and our City Clerk Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor, members of the City Council. I thank all of you who are in attendance. For the duration of this meeting, we ask that the City Council remain on screen and engaging their own microphones and webcams. Staff will engage their webcams and microphones for their presentations as well as responding to City Council questions. For the members of the public who are here to speak on any particular item, the mayor will call for a public comment. I will return to the screen and ask that you engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen that will alert us that you have a public comment. I will have the ability to open up your microphone, and you may at that time address the City Council with your public comment. All of that information will be repeated for the public comment on the items called. And that is the end of my spiel. Mayor Taylor, back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So are there any items on the consent calendar that any council member wants to pull?
Mayor Taylor, before we go to consent, we do need to do a report out from closed session.
Thank you for the reminder, Ms. Heron. Ms. Kara Silver or Starla, can you report out from closed session?
So Mayor Taylor, I think the council has reached a tentative agreement with both SEIU and Ask Me, and there is a staff report that was posted to the early release agenda yesterday on our website, and that is all the action.
Thank you. Okay, now we proceed to the consent calendar. Councilmember Carlton? You're on mute, Councilmember Carlton.
A rhetorical question, since someone asked me, and I wanted it to go on record, and I wanted to go on record because if I'm wrong, please correct me. On H8, which is with regard to cheaper and the pools, I was told, I was asked when they would be ready to be opened, and I was told that legally they could be open tomorrow after we vote, assuming we vote positive on that. And so if that's wrong, correct me. Otherwise, he will be free to open the pools as soon as he's logistically ready to do so. That's my understanding. Okay. Also, I had a question on H1.8, which was the minutes. We cut from the very first meeting the open data from police, from the items to be cut, and I never saw that documented in the minutes. And I was told that it wasn't in 2A, but I actually thought it was. So I would just bring that up, just being careful to make sure that we documented, because I remember that was important to us to leave while we were cutting all the other things. It was the one thing I believe we saved. But I don't know if we're taking note of what we cut or only what we saved in the minutes, but I just wanted to ask, are we only making minutes of the things that we cut?
I will have to review the minutes to see how the action was recorded. If you can just refresh my memory on which meeting date the first discussion on open data. So which set of minutes?
H1 was May 19th.
Perfect. So again, I will have to go back just to see how it was recorded, and if it should be added, I will definitely do that.
Okay, it looks like you only listed the things we cut and not the things that we pulled off. If so, that's fine. I just make sure it was captured.
Understood, thank you.
If that's the way you're doing the minutes, thank you.
Councilmember Mueller?
I'm fine, I'm good. I'll save my comments until when we discuss the budget.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
For item H1, I cannot vote on May 12th minutes, so I will abstain for that one piece, since I was not here.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. So Ms. Heron, the minutes for May 19th, I assume that you're reviewing right now, but Councilmember Carlton wanted to check to see if the minutes reflected exactly what the council discussion was. And then looking at the other items on the consent calendar, yes, Ms. Heron?
Oh, I was just preparing to respond if there was a question.
Okay. Were there any other items on consent? Councilmember Carlton?
I was just clarifying that if she's only listing in the minutes the things that were cut, that would make sense. So it might be that something's not listed off, it's just the way the minutes were reported. That's why I was asking that question.
Thank you for clarifying. Were there any other items on consent for questions or comments? I have a question on H3, and that is just a follow-up, and this is the authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with IFC International for an EIR. And there were questions asked the last time we had an EIR that ICF was doing regarding their housing needs assessment for the city of Menlo Park, and just wanted to follow up if there's any information that they have provided the city that the City Council hasn't received as of yet, since there is another study that they'll be doing around housing needs. So I'm not sure if Ms. Chow is on the line. You're on mute, Ms. Chow.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of the City Council. So this evening, we are considering a contract with ICF and its subconsultants for the preparation of an EIR as well as a housing needs analysis for Project 1075 of Ryan Drive. So the question related to the housing needs analysis would be performed by KMA, who is a subconsultant of ICF. I think some of the questions that we had earlier on other EIR contracts, are there other consultants that could perform the work? We did reach out, our city attorney did, assistant city attorney did reach out to another firm to engage if they would be appropriate to do the work. I don't think we felt comfortable with the work or the scope that was presented, and so we didn't move forward with that particular consultant. We're happy to hear other options and ideas, and we can be happy to reach out, but KMA was selected by ICF as their subconsultant for the required element, the HNA.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. One of my concerns is that we're using the same company, and are the EIR, whatever comes out of the EIR with the housing needs assessment, what information is being done with it? If it's just lays dormant? I know that they did three previous ones, and do we link them? Is there a shift? Like, are we paying attention to the information that they're providing, and how are we using it? Or how is the developer using it?
Yeah, so the HNA is another informational tool for the decision makers, so for the council to consider this project will be moving forward before the planning commission, it would go before the housing commission as well. And so it's similar to the fiscal impact analysis, similar to the environmental impact report, these are all informational tools to help decision makers in assessing the project, assessing the benefits and the impacts of the project. It'll look at, the HNA will look at the impacts of the proposed project on housing, and so it's more of an informational tool more than anything else.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So I'm, this is something that we discussed a while ago. I'm curious if there's ever, or I would like to see a retrospective analysis of how close the consultant comes to actually estimating the housing needs. So get a housing needs assessment, and then a few years later, we should be able to tell whether or not that was an accurate assessment or not, and be able to determine if that was, how things should be changed. And I would also hope that consultants would actually be doing that themselves so that they can refine their own estimation tools. Do you know if that's, do we ever do that? Does the, does the consultant ever do that? Because it seems like, you know, it's great to be doing all these estimates of how much housing is needed, but at some point, it's good to know whether and how accurate it was.
Right. So I think the information that's provided is more of a reflection of a moment in time. It's certainly something that we've talked about internally, whether or not the City Council wants to pursue a bigger study more on the jobs, housing balance, and look back on a reflection of projects and their impacts, but the HNA, my understanding is more of a reflection, a snapshot in sort of the time on the project.
So?
So it doesn't?
Please ask the consultant whether they do that.
Okay, we can let us?
Yeah. Because again, you know, we're doing this for a reason, to try and meet housing demand, and if we don't ever determine if it was an accurate assessment, then sort of why are we doing this?
Sure, and the consultants are working for, are part of the proposed project, it would be after the fact, after the project is built, and to sort of look back upon. So it'd be?
That's, yeah, so it's retrospective, looking at, yes, we thought that, you know, there would need to be 100 new homes, or there would, and is that really reflective of what actually comes to, actually what happens? I guess the other question, as long as we're discussing this, is do we ever consider additional vendors for the actual EIR? ICF seems to be, we use ICF regularly, and I'm just wondering, I know that there's other vendors out there who are used in large studies. How do we choose ICF, and is there a decision? And we could also talk about this at another time, it doesn't have to be in this meeting, but I'm very curious about how we choose vendors and?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Nash. Yes, I'm happy to kind of highlight our process a little bit here, and then we can certainly talk offline, you know, if there are follow-up questions. So for EIR, we typically, so this is something that the consultant is selected by the staff, that the city is the lead agency, it is paid for by the applicant through a pass-through. So when we look through a consultant, we generally reach out to perhaps ones that have worked within the city who are familiar with our thresholds, who are familiar with our process, to create some of the efficiencies and the, certainly the synergy between staff and then between projects. So projects that two primary consultants have worked here in more recent time in the Bayfront area, so that would be ICF and LSA, who was working on several contracts in our residential projects over, said in the Jefferson Independence Constitution area. What we do with our applicants is we, you know, identify that, you know, we can work with a consultant who we've worked with before, and there may be some, again, efficiency by having, you know, similar work, you know, knowing the knowledge of the area, but we also ask the applicant if they are interested in us exploring other opportunities, and reach out to consultants to receive a scope of work. Certainly, staff would vet the proposals that we receive to make sure that they are, you know, meeting qualifications, and then if we do feel that the scopes are meeting our standards, then we would share them with the applicant, and then they would have an opportunity to select, so long as we are comfortable with any of those vendors that we provide them with the scope of work. We certainly, you know, for subconsultants, if they are working with a particular applicant, you know, we would avoid, you know, conflicts of interest and working with vendors that may be working also for an applicant as well. So that's also something that we take into consideration.
Thank you so much for all that information.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. I just have two questions. One is, or one statement is that, so so far, we have not had follow-up on the accuracy of previous reports, which is why Councilmember Nash brought that up. But one is, do we have a notice of preparation policy, or is there just a standard practice?
Right, so our notice of preparation is widely served, spread, so there's one policy that the City Council adopted for large, potentially large and impactful projects, so projects that do need those criteria, so bonus level development projects, such as the one that we're describing this evening, would be noticed to the City Council. So we would notify, once we release it, we would post it in CCN, so that the council would be notified. The NOP is also distributed to a number of different organizations and agencies and members of the public who are within a certain noticing radius of a particular project. So that's the opportunity for members of the public to be aware of it, as well as outside agencies, school districts, to provide us with comments on the notice, or on the preparation. So?
Okay. My last question is, if there is an amendment to the general plan, will it apply to this project?
I do not believe this particular project is seeking a general plan amendment.
Okay.
They are seeking to?
No, I'm saying, if there is an amendment, if there is an amendment to the general plan, will it affect this project? Not the other way around?
I guess in what, is there a specific idea about an amendment to the general plan?
Well, we could follow up on this. We could follow up on this, but I just wanted to put the question out there. And then when it came to, I believe there was some type of outreach or mitigations that I would like to see more of a community task force that's referring to Connect Menlo in here, since Connect Menlo was five years ago. But those are things that we can take up offline.
I'm happy to meet with you next morning.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chow. Okay. Are there any other questions for, see, that was item H3. And Councilmember Carlton had a question with H1. Was there any questions with H2? Or any other items on consent? Did anyone have any questions? There was an item I would like to pull for further discussion to be added to a regular meeting, and that is some papers. That is item H4. So I would like to pull it and have it put on as regular business, and that one is authorize the city manager to execute a master agreement with consultant firms for on-call engineering services, landscaping, civil engineering, and architectural. Other than that, those were the only items that I had concern about on consent.
Just for clarity, Mayor Taylor, for item H4, are you wanting to pull that and add it to this meeting as a regular item? Did you want to pull it and discuss it now?
No.
Did you want us to put it at a future meeting?
Pull it and then put it at a future meeting, and that's just because I'm expecting a lot of time regarding other items on the agenda, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item H4?
Actually, Mayor Taylor, we will need to take public comment on consent calendar.
Oh, I forgot about that. Thank you, Ms. Heron, for the reminder. Okay. Are there any public comment speakers on the consent calendar?
So for any member of the public, if you have a comment on one of the consent calendar items listed on the screen, numbers H1 through H8, please engage that hand feature in the top right-hand side of your screen. We will be able to open up your mic, and you may address the City Council on any of the consent calendar items. I am seeing one here, just one moment. Our first speaker on consent will be Pamela Jones. Ms. Jones, you are unmuted and able to address the City Council at this time.
Hello, Council, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, council members and staff. My comment is specific to H3, and that when the council brings up a discussion on how the NOPS are drafted and when they are drafted, it is critical that there is robust outreach to the community, so the community has an option to weigh in on the NOPS. Currently, the way it is done, the NOPS may not include all of the information that is pertinent to accurately assessing the housing needs and all of the dynamics around housing in the city, specifically in the way it's been done in District 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela Jones. At this time, is there anyone else wishes to speak on a consent calendar item? Seeing none, we can now call for a vote. Need a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, with the exception of item H4.
Councilmember Nash?
Oh, I move to approve the consent items except H4.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. The roll call vote. Councilmember Carlton?
Hi.
Councilmember Mueller? Councilmember Nash?
Yes, except for I1, where I was absent for the May 12th meeting.
Understood, thank you. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Nash abstaining from the May 12th minute, and H4 being pulled and brought back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on the agenda, item G1, and that's Consider Applicants and Make Appointments to Fill Vacancies on Various City Commissions and Committees. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any members of the public wish to address the City Council regarding commission and committee vacancies and appointments this evening, please engage that hand feature in the top right of your screen. You will have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council. Okay, we do have a few public speakers, Mayor Taylor. Our first is Joyce Fredericks. Joyce, you are unmuted and able to address the City Council.
Hi, my name is Joyce, and I am applying for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I lived in Menlo Park for over 40 years. I raised my kids here, went to local public schools, used the recreation programs and used the parks, and four of my grandchildren live in Menlo Park, so I still frequent the parks all the time. In terms of background, I was an educator for most of my career, and I've done a lot of volunteer work in the community. I volunteered at my children's schools. I'm a mentor for Peninsula Bridge. I'm also a docent at Jasper Ridge Biological Preserve, but most of my volunteer work has involved the Environmental Volunteers, an organization that provides hands-on science education for kids in local schools, who do a lot of work in Menlo Park. And in that capacity, I've been on the board, I've been a classroom volunteer, and worked on a bunch, a number of different committees. In terms of what I bring to the table, I have, in my work in volunteer situations, worked on teams, and I feel like I'm a team player. I'm a creative thinker, I have a collaborative approach to working with others, I have a lot of experience in leadership roles, I spent 14 years on the Environmental Volunteers' Board, and for six of those, I was the board chair. I also have a deep care and concern for everyone in our community, and I'm a good listener. I respect the values of the Parks and Recreation Commission, in that we have to serve our diverse community with inclusive programs, we have financial responsibilities, we want to provide excellent programming, preserve open space and parklands, and have positive community relations, and all that is especially challenging at this time. But I think that one of the challenges, of course, is to figure out how we can best serve the community under the current situation. So I'm a flexible person, and believe it's important to be ready to pivot if circumstances change, and I think I would be an asset to this commission, and I would also really enjoy being involved in the community that I love in that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joyce. Our next public comment is coming from Sukanya Guha. Sukanya, you are unmuted and able to address the City Council.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor Taylor, and Honorable City Council members and staff. My name is Sukanya Guha, and I'm resident of Menlo Park for the last six years. Currently, I'm a long-term guest teacher with the Menlo Park City School District, and I've been a teacher for the last 10 years. I took a break from teaching when I had two of my kids, but I'm back to teaching now, and I am very interested in joining and being a part of the Library Commission, because I feel my background in teaching and education gives me a different perspective, and I would love to implement a few different programs, especially during the current pandemic which is going on. And I've always been an active volunteer, especially in the current school district, as well as even in Martinview, where we lived previously, and I feel that I could bring good changes into the library program, especially involving children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sukanya. And our next public commenter is going to be Jennifer Baskin. Jennifer, you are unmuted, if you would like to address the City Council.
Hi, hello, Mayor Taylor, councilwomen and men and staff. Just to reintroduce myself, I'm Jennifer Baskin. I'm currently the vice chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm seeking reappointment to an additional term. I've greatly enjoyed my experience on the commission, and I really believe that I will be an asset to maintaining the momentum of our plan goals. My past work and in-depth knowledge of the master plan and needs of the Menlo Park community would help our commission. the Menlo Park community would help our commission really hit the ground running after a brief hiatus in meetings due to COVID-19 and shelter in place. I really hope to continue the role on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next public commenter is going to be Janelle London. Janelle, we have unmuted your mic, and you are able to address the city council.
Thank you, mayor and city council members. I have enjoyed serving on the Environmental Quality Commission for the last four years, and I'm seeking reappointment. I am so excited about what we've done, but I feel like we've only just begun. It's taken these four years to kind of get situated and really figure out what we can do, and now I'm excited to carry on the work of the EQC, and I'm especially excited for this city council. You guys have encouraged us to dream big, and we're ready to dream big. We're ready to take Menlo Park on a sustainability journey that establishes it firmly as a leader, which it already is, but we're ready to take it even further. And so I really look forward to and hope that I will be reappointed so that I can go hand-in-hand with you to really advance Menlo Park and establish us even more firmly as a leader in sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. And at this time, I see no further hands raised. Mayor Taylor, I can return the meeting to you.
Thank you, Ms. Herron, and thank you for all the public comments. And so now, is there any discussion that we need to have about the applicants for the commissions? Or do we want to just jump right into voting? Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, we generally, although we have always been blessed with amazing people applying, as a general rule, we reappoint people that have been serving before, again, keeping that momentum going. I was just looking, I couldn't find it in the previous thing, and it really just occurred to me, and I'm sorry that it did, because I would have liked to have looked at the people that were reappointing to make sure that they have actually been turning up. And I know we got that report a few, I think it was a month ago, but I don't remember the exact date. So I'm happy to reappoint and will probably vote to reappoint people that have been serving before, but I would like to do so with a view to looking at the people. Some people, if it's on the board or fine, you know, sometimes things just conflict, but where there are extreme cases of people not turning up, I think maybe we should take that into consideration when we're reappointing people. And so I would say that maybe in the future, we have a session where we look at the people who really haven't been turning up and address that, but not right now, because we don't have it in front of us. Unless we're all sitting in front of our computer, unless you can tell us what date that was, and we can pull up the agenda right now, but I don't remember the exact date.
Through the mayor, it's actually the attachment D to the staff report. So if you have access to the staff report, the attendance report was also included, and that was, again, given on March 26.
And I was looking for that. Where is that?
Thank you, Ms. Herron. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't know, like, how others feel, but I'd be most comfortable with just sort of going, you know, down the list, starting with, you know, whatever commission we want to go with first. I think it's Complete Streets, and taking nominations and then, you know, proceeding from there. Again, I know that, given that we're doing this differently or via a different platform that we've done it in the past, open if there was a plan to do something differently.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Nash?
I would second that, with the exception of I'd love to take the Housing Commission first. We have one strong applicant there and one position open, and that person, John Pimentel, has applied to several commissions, and I think if we were to do Housing Commission first, that would clarify some of the other commissions.
Councilmember Mueller?
It's fine. Like, I was actually gonna suggest the same thing, so.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll go Housing Commission first.
So through the mayor, this being the more simpler of our appointments this evening. Housing Commission does have one regular term ending in April of 2024. We do have one applicant for that, as listed on the screen. Opposed to doing nominations and roll call voting, we can appoint Mr. Pimentel to the Housing Commission by acclamation if the city council is agreeable with that.
Yes.
Okay, so by acclamation, John Pimentel has been appointed to the Housing Commission. If the city council has no further discussion, I can continue with the remainder of the appointments. Okay. So the first one that you're going to be seeing here is Complete Streets. We do have two regular terms ending in April of 2024. We also have one expired term ending in 2022. So my recommendation to the council would be to appoint the two regular terms first, and then we can appoint to the remaining unexpired term. Okay, so, okay. At this time, I would like to take any nominations for the three remaining applicants. Again, we need two appointments for the two regular terms.
Councilmember Nash?
I'd like to nominate Katie Beruzzi for one of the regular terms.
Do we have any further nominations?
Councilmember Carlton?
Patricia Espinoza.
Do we have any further nominations for the two regular terms? Seeing none, by acclamation, the city council may appoint Katie Beruzzi and Patricia Espinoza to the two regular terms for the Complete Streets Commission. Thank you. Any opposed to the appointments of these two? Thank you. So having the first two done, we have the one unexpired term, and we have one applicant remaining for Complete Streets, Mr. Isaac Wyatt. So again, if the city council would like to appoint by acclamation, they may. Anyone opposed to the appointment? Okay, wonderful. So our next commission is going to be the Environmental Quality Commission, and we have two regular terms, both ending in April 2024. I'm going to remove Mr. Pimentel, as he has already been appointed. And that leaves us with four remaining applicants for the two terms. And at this time, we can take nominations.
I'll nominate James Payne.
Thank you. Do we have any further nominations?
I'll nominate Leah Elkins.
Thank you. It looks like maybe Kat and Ray have their hands raised.
I nominate Janelle London.
Confirming no other nominations at this time? Seeing none. Okay, so for the roll call vote, I will just ask you to give me the I vote for each name that I read. The candidate who receives the three votes will be appointed. And again, this is for two terms, so we can appoint two applicants. The first one is going to be Leah Elkins. Councilmember Carlton?
No.
Thank you.
And I say that in no offense, I just.
And unfortunately, it is kind of an awkward way to vote, and I do.
May I make a suggestion that we just raise our hands for each, call each name?
That will work. Thank you. So for Leah Elkins, if we can have a show of hands? Thank you. Our next applicant, show of hands for Janelle London.
So Judy, just so I can, I can only vote once, right, in this, because we're just, this is just one term, or we're taking up the two positions?
We are taking up both.
Okay.
Both positions right now. Okay, and James Payne? Okay, so by acclamation, oh, yes, Councilmember Carlton.
I just wanna, I just wanna thank her for coming in and for being so passionate, and I think she's wonderful, and I trust she will be appointed next time. We do, unless someone really doesn't show up, tend to reappoint people, but I don't want her to take that personally, and I, and I hope that she will keep her name on the list, which she has the option of doing. A lot of people don't, we just don't have the space to put everybody on, and it's not a personal thing, and I sincerely hope she does choose to stay on the list so that we can appoint her the next time around.
Councilmember Nash?
I would like to say the same for Desta Rains, whom I've never met, but I feel very strongly that we need lots of new blood in the commissions. It's wonderful to see people apply and strongly encourage that.
And so by acclamation, the city council will be appointing Leah, Janelle London, and James Payne to the two Environmental Quality Commission appointments. Seeing no opposition, thank you. So our next commission is going to be the Finance and Audit Committee. Finance and Audit Committee has two regular terms ending in April of 2022. We do have two applicants for the two terms. Do note that Mr. Theo Keat has also applied for other commissions as well.
Councilmember Mueller?
I'd like to nominate Roger Royce.
Councilmember Carlton?
I'd like to also nominate Theo Keat.
Thank you. And having both applicants nominated by acclamation, we can appoint both to the two terms for the Finance and Audit Committee. Seeing no opposition, wonderful, thank you. So for our Library Commission, we do have two regular terms ending in April of 2024. We have one expired term ending in April of 2022, and we also have one unexpired term ending in April of 2021. It's currently set up to vote for the two regular terms and then move on to the two unexpired terms. And so at this time, we can take nominations for the two regular terms ending in April 2024.
Councilmember Nash?
Actually, Councilmember Mueller had his hand up first.
Kind of you, Betsy, thank you. I was gonna say, nominate Katie Hadrich for a regular term.
Do we have another nomination for the regular term to the Library Commission?
Councilmember Nash?
I'd like to nominate Sukanya Gaia.
There are no further nominations. By acclamation, we can appoint Sukanya Guha and Katie Hadrich to two regular commission, Library Commission terms? Anyone opposed? Thank you. So at this time, we're moving on to the one expired term ending April of 2022. We can take nominations at this time. Vice Mayor Combs, I'm not sure if you had your hand raised.
Yeah, sure. Yan Tran?
Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, by acclamation, appointing Yan Tran to the one expired term for the Library Commission, expiring April 2022. Any opposed? So for our last Library Commission term, it's an unexpired term ending in April 2021. We have one remaining applicant, so by acclamation, can we appoint May Rin?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, so our next commission up for appointment is our Park and Recreation Commission. We have two regular terms ending in April of 2024. And at this time, we can take nominations.
Councilmember Mueller?
Jennifer Baskin.
Councilmember Carlton?
Sorry, my kids were screaming. Jennifer Baskin and Jennifer Johnson were the two that I would like, I didn't hear what Ray said.
Jennifer Baskin?
Thank you. Then I would like to put forward Jennifer Johnson, and thank you. I followed the link, I'm sorry I missed that link, and went through, and I'm content that all the people that we're appointing have been attending very well, and we're very appreciative of that.
Any further nominations?
Councilmember Nash?
I'd like to nominate Joyce Friedrichs.
Thank you. So by a show of hands, Jennifer Baskin. Thank you. And by a show of hands, Joyce Fredericks. Thank you. And by show of hands, Jennifer Johnson. Thank you. So by acclamation, I ask the council to appoint Jennifer Baskin and Jennifer Johnson to the Park and Recreation Commission. Seeing no opposition. Thank you. Moving right along here. We are to our Planning Commission, where we have two regular terms ending in April of 2024.
Councilmember Carlton.
Andrew Barnes.
Councilmember Mueller.
Henry Riggs.
Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none. By acclamation, we can appoint Mr. Andrew Barnes and Mr. Henry Riggs to the Planning Commission. Any opposition? Or any opposed? Seeing none, okay. Right, our next expire or unexpired vacancy is from the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District. This is a city council appointed position and it was appointed to in January of 2020. However, the member was unable to, to serve and was removed. So at this time, we don't have any applicants for this. However, the city council can make appointments to, based on the applicants we have remaining.
Councilmember Carlton.
This is actually something I'm interested in and I looked it up and about half of the people on this committee are city council members, so I would be happy to sit on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will assign city councilmember Carlton to this mosquito and vector control district. Thank you. And our final appointment of this evening is for our Sister Cities Committee. We have one unexpired term ending in October of 2020. Take nominations.
Councilmember Carlton.
I would put forward Lynn Auslander. She was one of the, the parents of a previous trip to Japan, so she knows, she has a good understanding of what's involved.
Councilmember Mueller.
Can I suggest to the council that we just extend this to an, or just we add 10, 1, 20, 20, then we make it a four-year term? After that, it's four months. It's just a suggestion. We can vote to have the term end in, in October first, but it's such a short time. Like, I think the, the committee might meet twice between.
I'm fine with that if you guys are.
Councilmember Nash.
I'm totally fine with that, but as you've heard me say before, I'm, I'm very interested in seeing whether this committee might spin off into its own organization outside of the council and the city.
And just as information, all of the terms of Sister City Committee members expire October 1 of 2020, which is why this one expires October 1. And it was an unexpired term due to an unexpected vacancy.
Okay, I retract my suggestion. It just occurred to me.
You're on mute.
Oh, thanks. I nominate Anna Anario, who I, I think has, has hosted some exchange students from, from Bezen in the past.
Thank you. So by show of hands, Lynn Auslander. Thank you. By show of hands, Anna Tavora Anario.
It's accurate. I abstained.
Okay, so with three votes, the city council is going to be appointing Anna Tavora Anario. Thank you all for your time. I know it's, there's a lot and so we appreciate it. And Mayor Taylor, we can return to the next item.
Thank you, Ms. Herron. At this time, we'll move to regular business and that is the, open the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year budget for 2020 to 2021. And to introduce this item is our assistant, assistant city manager, Nick Pogaros. Oh, I'm sorry, our assistant administrative director, Jan Jacobson. Dan Jacobson.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. If you'll give me just a second to set up my screen, please let me know if you can see my screen. Okay, while I am presenting, I will be unable to see you. So if you do have any questions during the presentation, please don't hesitate to speak up so that I can hear them. So tonight, we have the fiscal year 2020, 21 proposed budget. This is a very important night for me, not only because budgets are important for finance folks, but also because it is my anniversary, so happy to be here with you. The agenda tonight, we have the requested action of city council this evening. We will review the assumptions that went into developing the proposed budget. We'll discuss budget balancing measures that have been incorporated into the budget. We'll have a discussion of childcare, given that there is some additional direction necessary for that particular item. We'll cover utility users' tax and one-time money and the options available to city council, and then briefly discuss the next steps and what city council can expect at upcoming meetings. So for this evening, staff requested city council hold the public hearing on the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, 21, and if there are any changes desired by council to provide direction on those changes. Highlighted here as a separate item is the childcare services, given that those are an additional consideration and we'll have a slide on that in a little bit. Confirm the intent to maintain the temporary reduction in utility users' tax rate at the reduced rate of 1%, which expires later this year. And if desired, if there is a case where direction from city council causes expenditures to exceed revenues, direct the use of one-time money if desired. So the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, 21 relies on the budget theme of resilient community. And as expressed by the city manager in the transmittal letter, that is really a reflection of the difficult times that the city and the community are facing right now and the resilience that has been demonstrated by the community so far. And the expectation that that resilience will be needed for months to come, an unknown number of months, but certainly that this is not a short-term issue. The proposed budget is balanced without the use of reserves. That is due to a number of direction, a number of service level changes which were directed by city council over the last month and a half. They result in $13.72 million reduction in general fund revenues. That is slightly in excess of the initial estimates and that is due to some of the service level direction, service level changes that were directed by city council. It results in a 17.1% reduction in authorized positions. This is in recognition of the fact that the city is a service organization and its staff costs are one of the largest categories of expenditures for the city budget. And then one major point to note here is that it is substantially a rollover capital improvement program or CIP that will be brought back for city council consideration planned in July of 2020. So some of the major factors that influence the development of the budget, as have been discussed over previous meetings, there is an expectation that major tax sources will remain low for a substantial period of time. Transient occupancy tax, also referred to as TOT or hotel tax, is not expected to return to prior pre-COVID levels during this fiscal year and that is reflected in the proposed budget. Additionally, the reduced economic activity is expected to reduce sales taxes over the course of the budget. The proposed budget incorporates a number of reductions in charges for services. These are due to event and program cancellations, the alteration of a number of programs that the city previously offered and also includes other categories such as development activity and planning and building fees that would be included in charges for services and the expectation of the closure of congregate facilities for many of the congregate facilities for a substantial time period. As mentioned before, there are structural program and service level reductions. These do, as mentioned, the substantial revenue shortfall, these do offset that. One thing to highlight here, the, but the proposed budget assumes that there is no federal assistance throughout the course of the fiscal year. At the time of budget preparation and currently, there is no guarantee of federal assistance and there's no estimable quantity on that. Though, as has been discussed with city council over a number of meetings in the past, the city budget is a living document. If that comes to be, if there is federal assistance that it's available, that can be incorporated into the budget through a budget amendment and that can be done at any time once that is known. And then one major item which will be discussed further tonight is childcare. The proposed budget includes baseline funding for childcare, though it is not expected to operate the same way. And that is something that we have several city staff subject matter experts available to discuss how those changes would need to be done to change the childcare program going forward. So at the June 2 council meeting, there was direction from city council to incorporate a number of additional reductions. There was a $2.5 million need between the expected revenue shortfall that was outlined before and the number of expenditures. The way staff completed this and incorporated into the budget was to freeze most remaining vacancies. This reduced the expenditure budget by 1.32 million. Further consolidation of contract services, so while contract services had been reduced in a number of specific instances, this further consolidated those. There is the expectation that contract services will not be able to provide a full year's worth of funding and staff will return to city council for further direction as additional needs are identified. And then last thing on here, this, the city is in the process of getting an actuarial evaluation of its other post-employment benefits, the expected liability of that. In the past years, city council has directed a number of funds into an irrevocable trust for OPEB. And so at this point, staff anticipates that that trust fund will be either fully or substantially funded. And this small alteration in the OPEB budget reduces the risk that current year funds will be lost due to the irrevocable nature of that. So the vacancies that were not previously frozen from direction by city council but were frozen in order to reach that additional $2.5 million in need are here. The first two on there are in the Community Development Department. The next two listed, which is a total of three positions, are in Library and Community Services. The next three or a portion of the last one are in Public Works and there is also a management analyst in the city manager's office that's included in these frozen vacancies. So one major topic of discussion tonight and one that city staff needs direction on is the reactivation of the childcare programs. So given the health order restrictions on the teacher-child ratios in comparison to what they were in the past, there will be substantial changes necessary to the programs. The childcare programs have two locations. The first, Bellhaven Child Development Center, or BHCDC, projects an additional general fund subsidy necessary in fiscal year 2020, 21 of just a little under half a million, .498,000. This would take the total projected subsidy for fiscal year 2021 to 1.21 million. The other location, Menlo Children's Center, or MCC, has an estimated additional need from the general fund, an additional subsidy of 91,000. This would take the total projected subsidy need for the, that specific location to 454,000 for the year. And one way to cover that cost would be to increase tuition in order to recover the direct costs and that amount would be $1,147 per month. So I will note that these projections are conservative. The goal in the past for Menlo Children's Center in particular has been full cost recovery, which is why the tuition increase is included there. After this presentation, we do have, as I mentioned, a number of subject matter experts. So Sean Reinhardt and Adrian Lee Bird are available to answer specific questions about childcare reactivation. And staff is looking for direction on how to incorporate that into the budget, which is planned for adoption later this year. So one component.
Councilmember Nash has a question, just a moment.
So when you say the tuition increase to recover direct costs, I don't want to get into a discussion right now, but are you including the administrative costs and the facility cost in that?
I don't believe that those were included in that since they haven't typically been in the past, but I would have to defer to Sean on that one.
Okay, we can talk later then. Thank you.
Okay, one other component of the, the budget process that comes before council on a yearly basis is the utility users' tax rate. The rate is currently below the 2.5% maximum for telecommunications and 3.5% maximum for gas, electric and water and is at 1% for all those categories. In June of 2019, the council took action to temporarily reduce those rates for 12 months, which is the maximum time that it can do so. And that temporary reduction expires on September 30th, 2020. Staff understands city council direction to be, to not increase the rate or continue the reduced rate to 1% and that is annually done. So if that is incorrect, staff needs direction to change that. Otherwise, staff will continue preparing the budget as if the 1% rate is included, the temporarily reduced 1% rate is extended for an additional 12 months. Also, something that city council has seen a number of times before, one-time money options, these are not necessary with the proposed budget as it stands. However, these funds are available for city council consideration if there are additional service level changes which are directed tonight. These are, as before, grouped into tiers with tier one being the buckets of money which are most closely tied to the current circumstances, tier two being less closely tied but still available, and tier three being those which are least advised, given their, the typical costs in excess in the future of using those, those are typically the last resort monies. Again, these are not necessary in the city manager's proposed budget as presented, but are available for city council use. And again, city council must direct that use. So in terms of what the city council can expect in the future, the budget adoption is scheduled for June 23rd. During the time between this evening and when the report for that is published, staff will incorporate any additional direction that city council gives. Staff will also work on expanding the budget portal. So the city manager's proposed budget is available on OpenGov. It includes a number of dynamic reports, but is a single-story page. The budget, which will be available by June 23rd, will have a number of additional pages all linked together, but will include those same dynamic reports as well as a number of additional ones. And then staff anticipates the need to begin fiscal year 2020, 21 review in August of 2020. So as I mentioned and has been mentioned a number of times in the past, the budget document is of course something that can be amended and updated as often as is necessary. Beginning review in August 2020 will allow staff to incorporate some additional experience from the post-stay-at-home order and understanding how that might affect. and understanding how that might affect city finances going forward. And that would allow time to plan for a first quarter amendment by September of 2020. So just a brief recap of the requested direction. City staff do need direction on the proposed budget as it was presented. This includes childcare reactivation as its own sort of discrete category. Any other service level changes, those ones that were incorporated in the proposed budget were the ones that city council identified in the past. But they can give additional direction to change those now. Personnel direction, which could include those positions that were included before or mentioned before, as well as planning to change personnel staffing levels if that is desired by council. As mentioned before, the UUT rate and whether to include the temporarily reduced rate going forward and the use of one-time money if necessary and desired by council. And so this concludes my presentation. I will turn off the presentation and hop off the camera. As I mentioned, there are a number of city staff available. We have the department heads as the subject matter experts who can answer questions about their department budgets in particular. So that's why I'll hop off to allow them room in order to get on. And with that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Are there any follow-up questions for staff before we go to public comment? Ms. Heron, how many public comment speakers, or can you please take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, for any member of the public who is here to speak on item I, one, which is public hearing on the proposed 2021 budget. Please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I do have two public comments that will receive, that requested a return phone call. This could be due to them maybe not having access to a computer. So while we wait for hands to be raised, I'm going to attempt to give these two folks a call.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And while we wait, the council has decided to have a dinner break from 6:50 until 7:10. So we will listen to the two public comments by phone and then follow up with the rest of the public comments at 7:10. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience while I tried both callers. Unfortunately, neither of them were able to answer their devices at this time. So Mayor Taylor, if you would like to break now, we can. And then continue public comment after resuming.
Yes, that will be fine. Thank you, Ms. Heron.
So just as a reminder, if the city council can disengage their webcams and mute their microphones upon returning, just engage the webcam and keep your microphone muted until we call back to order. Thank you.
Seeing that we have all city council members returned, Mary, you can call the meeting back later.
Thank you, Ms. Herron. And now we will be taking public comment.
Thank you. So our first public comment comes from Nicola Diolati. Nicola, you are unmuted and able to address the city council.
Yeah. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening service city council and the city staff that is in attendance. I am a parent of a child that is attending MCC. And we've had the, I emailed to the city council and they've been in touch with Mr. Reinhardt regarding the financial assumptions that are made around the proposals for MCC. And I wanted to point out that the numbers that have been put together in the staff report 20122-CC do not seem to add up. They seem to have been pulled out of context. There are different numbers that assume different attendance levels, different enrollment levels. And with the proposed increased fees and proposed reduced attendance for MCC, which I understand is due to the COVID situation, still the center would be bringing up 1.16 million, which is far, which far exceeds the estimates of city staff. Therefore, it's, I'm confused why we're even talking about increased subsidy from the general fund. If these are the requests, and I think you as city council have the right to determine the policies and the fees that you want to apply for running childcare services, if these are the requests, then the burden on the general fund from MCC is much lower. That said, also, I wanted to point out that MCC is not slated to reopen until August 10. We as families need that service. We are, we are asked to go back to work. We are asked to be productive, to be part of the workforce. And childcare services are essential to enable us to provide, you know, to, to be able to deliver and participate in the workforce. So I wanted to point out that the reports that have been put in front of you do not add up. And you're asked to make decisions based on data that are somewhat inconsistent. That said, I also wanted to thank you for what you have been doing so far. I've been part of this conversation since May 12. And I've seen all the hard decisions that you have made. And I, and I know that those are not, those have not been easy conversations. And I wanted to emphasize that as a Menlo Park resident, I'm ready, I'm ready to do my part for what I'm asking for what is fair. And childcare services are much needed. There are 50 people on the waitlist for MCC. And it's unbelievable that the center is not running at 100% enrollment. There is high demand for these services. And so please take all these aspects in consideration because we need the service and the financial add up. If you really look into that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next public comment comes from Myra Lumbera. Myra, you are off mute and able to address the city council.
Hello, my name is Myra and I live in Bellhaven. I'm calling to ask you to reconsider the Annete Harris Community Center closure. This center is a pillar of the community. I don't know whose horrible idea it was to bus people over to the other side of town for transitional services for two years, but let's think about it for a second. It's mind blowing that I have to say this out loud in the year 2020 and during the political revolution that we're living in, but we cannot bus a predominantly black and Latino population to a predominantly white side of town. We are all watching the news and know that change starts at the local government level. I'm sure that we can find another option to continue services in the Bellhaven area before and during construction. We could look to Facebook to provide safe space for these services in their new, now empty building. They're literally in the community center's backyard. Mayor Taylor cannot be the only vote to save the center. We need allies. I am asking you to use reserves to save the center and give our youth a safe space to flourish. I'm not saying to defund the police. I'm saying to prioritize community and social services. Studies have shown that redirected and reinvested funds can uplift communities while also reducing crime and increasing safety. Budgets reflect value. I will say that again. Budgets reflect value. Tell Bellhaven residents that they matter because they matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Myra. Our next public commenter is Sohnu Badani Israni.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. My name is Sohnu Badani Israni, and I'm a resident of Ladera and the Menlo Park community is mine. Thank you. My name is Sonu Badani Israni, and I'm a resident of Ladera, and the Menlo Park community is mine. My children attended schools there. I shop there. I volunteer there and have done so since 1984. In recent weeks, our country has been devastated by the murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery. These murders have led to demands, first by black organizers in Minneapolis and now around the country, that we defund the police. I'm commenting to ensure these demands are heard in Menlo Park as well. I commend the decision you've made for modest cuts to the police department's budget. However, modest cuts are not enough. I would like to propose a 20% cut of the police department's budget and a plan for further cuts in future years. This tracks the demands of organizers on the ground in cities around the country. The American police originated as slave patrols. They were hired to catch escaped slaves and return them to their masters. Over the years, slave patrols turned into police departments, literally, and continued to terrorize black and brown bodies. Thus, defending the police is simply a continuation of the project of abolishing slavery. This is why it is imperative we take a strong stance right now against the dehumanization of black Americans and literally put our money where our mouths are. The Menlo Park Police Department itself has a sordid history. In the 60s and 70s, the department, like many others in the country, was militarized. The Menlo Park Police Chief attempted to demilitarize the department but had limited success. The lesson to take from this is that reforming the police to overcome racial inequality does not work. Because racial inequality, and in particular, the subjugation of black bodies, is endemic to the project of policing. We must allocate power, money, and resources away from the police and give it back to the community. I encourage the city council to take a first step, a meaningful step tonight. Let's not be left behind in this national movement. Thank you.
Sonu, the next public commenter is Yuri Nadav. Yuri, you are off mute and able to address the city council.
Hello, mayor. Hello, council members and fellow Menlo Park residents. I am an MCC parent and I lived in Menlo Park for the past 10 years. I read the plan changes to MCC payments, and I believe they will result in the closing of this excellent daycare. Many of the families won't be able to afford a 75% price hike or 30 days in advance payment. I think that the numbers don't make sense. I also think that not enough thought was given to alternative solutions, such as, for example, cutting hours, say, to operate the facility from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. instead of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., or using, or expanding enrollment through the usage of other available space in the building. Parents were definitely not part of the planning and the proposed solution. Much more than that, I'm concerned because this is a very short term solution that will be losing value to Menlo Park in the long run. It will push out of Menlo Park those families with a higher scare for education. The same line of thinking would have resulted in the complete elimination of Menlo Park School Districts if that was an option. I hope that you all realize that the value of living in Menlo Park and the fact that many families are willing to pay a very high premium to live here comes first and foremost from Menlo Park reputation and education. Please make a decision with a long term in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Yuri. Our next public comment is coming from Karen Grove. Karen, you are off mute and able to address the city council.
Thank you. I want to start by saying that this budget discussion takes place in the dark shadow of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Chinetu Okobi, and so many black lives extinguished by police and vigilantes. Each was a unique life force stolen from their families, from their communities, and from us. Each deserved a life of joy and safety, not of state sanctioned anti-black violence. I hope you join me in condemning the brutal actions of the individual perpetrators and the systems that protect those perpetrators. We as a community, as city council members, police, city staff, and residents, we all play a role in either upholding those systems or rebuilding them for justice. So I too commend the decision to make modest cuts to the police department's budget. But we're still struggling to pay for services in Bellhaven that serve our predominantly black and Latinx community. We should not cut services to our predominantly black and Latinx community. We should not cut city-run subsidized childcare. All of that will dramatically impact the very communities in which the police harm. We can have safe communities with less funding to police and more, more funding to services. But us be among those who affirm not just inward, but indeed justice for black lives. I encourage you to create a budget that reflects those values. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Our next public commenter will be Adina Levin. Adina? I have moved the mute. You are able to unmute yourself and address the city council.
Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect. Thank you, Adina. Adina, it looks like you might have muted yourself. Adina, are you able to unmute your device? Okay. Let's go to the next public commenter and we will come back to Adina. The next one is Heather Hopkins. Heather, you are off mute and able to address the city council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mary Taylor, council members and staff. I'm a local childcare preschool owner. I'm concerned that the staff report projection of $1.67 million required as a general fund subsidy to support the childcare programs is overly conservative and makes it more difficult, difficult for you all to make the decision on whether you should invest in these city-run childcare programs. This is for two reasons. First, this number is based on the 2019-2020 budget for the childcare programs, not the actuals. Over the last couple of years, the childcare program budgets have been overly conservative. In the case of 2018-2019, it was off by the tune of half a million dollars. Secondly, the Bellhaven Child Development Center does not include Big Lift and federal grants in the income line because staff has not gotten those numbers yet. However, it does include them in the expense line. And I don't believe it should be included in one and not the other. It should be zero in income and zero in expenses or some proportion thereof in both. While I understand the staff's desire to budget conservatively, I think this paints an overly dramatic picture that makes your decision look more difficult. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Our next public commenter will return to Adina Levin. Adina, if you're able to unmute your device.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right. So I would like to make a couple of comments focusing on items that were in the Menlo Together letter and then another comment as an individual. So would, in the Menlo Together letter, we urge the council, especially given the new information about the Bellhaven Community Center, the closure would not be until the end of March at the earliest. And it sounded like there are ongoing changes to that program that could potentially get that closure even later. So given the fact that it has the potential to be open for much of the fiscal year, it would encourage you to keep that open and certainly not have any differences between that and what is being done for Ariaga. And there are many, many programs that are being done differently in a COVID compatible manner. Maybe there are recreational activities that can move outdoors and a fitness class can be done, you know, Tai Chi out of doors. If there are some activities that can't be done, maybe there's activities that can be done in multiple rooms in more of a socially distanced manner. So I would urge really creative thinking about how to provide services for the community that really needs it. Instead of the closure, would also support what Heather Hopkins has said in terms of saving the childcare services and looking, the, the staff analysis made the program look uncompetitive in a way that it would likely not stay open. And Heather provided some other ways of looking at that. So would urge you to keep those open and look to some capital improvement programs that can be deferred and look to some emergency savings for use in this kind of emergency. And lastly, speaking as an individual, a head of groups, I do, you know, we did support the, the reasonable cuts to police services, but looking forward, there is so much information and discussion about how in our communities, police are used for certain kinds of things that maybe other kinds of services would do better in terms of interacting with people with mental illness and people who need housing. And so in the coming year, with the police strategic plan, would like to look at where those resources are used and are there ways to use our money better that would be healthier for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina. Our next public commenter will be Julie Shanson. Julie, you are off mute and able to address the city council.
Hello. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to echo what you've heard from my fellow members of Menlo Together, Adina Levin, Karen Grove, Heather Hopkin, Hopkins, sorry. And I want to encourage you to think about looking at the budget through a lens of values toward doing what's right, not necessarily what's easy, and toward using your ability to use one-time funds to manage this emergency and future emergencies. Thank you very much.
And our next public commenter is O Lopez. O Lopez, you are off mute and able to address the city council. Again, this is O Lopez. Okay, we'll move on to the next and come back. Next public commenter is Pamela Jones. Pamela, your microphone is unmuted.
Yes, good evening again. I really appreciate the council holding seven meetings and the hundreds of hours that the staff has spent developing this proposed 2020-2021 budget. Community services for residents in District One must continue the same way they will at Ariaga. Consider the challenges of attempting to provide socially distanced busing that allows residents to arrive at Ariaga in a timely manner and return home during peak traffic. This alone makes busing an option unrealistic. I'll also ask you, as a child who grew up in the 50s and 60s, I ask you, how well did school busing work? Busing residents like school busing is not the solution. It's my understanding that the users of the programs, Onetta Harris Senior Center, youth centers, prefer to remain at home until the rebuilding. This is a question that should have been asked of the Onetta Harris staff and youth staff that provide direct services. Have the residents of District One been directly included in the discussion by having the staff that works directly with the residents here in the community? You would have a very different answer to the question that has not been asked. We're living in a time where visually, the reality of the historic racial inequities, inequalities, and the underinvestment in this community. The underinvestment, while money is from increased taxes through gentrification and the fees generated by development in District One are used district-wide, citywide, rather than in the district that is being affected the most. All residents should be embraced as a part of the Menlo Park family. City values must reflect the desires of the residents. And this also applies to childcare and other services that are direct to the, to the residents of Menlo Park. Thank you.
Mayor Taylor, I'm not sure if it's my end or yours, but I'm unable to hear you. Is any of the members of the city council able to hear me? This is Judy. Okay, but we're unable to hear the mayor. Okay, thank you.
Judy, can you hear me?
Yes.
I didn't know if anyone else was having an issue. I wasn't able to unmute until like right now.
Correct. That was Judy's error, my mistake in muting the last public commenter. I must have muted everyone on the panel. So my apologies for that, everyone.
Thank you, Judy. Oh, I wanted to just find out if we, if at this time, if there are any more hands raised, we can go ahead and close public comment. So if there are any last minute public comment speakers online, if you can go ahead and raise your hand. And at this time, we'll take Councilmember Mueller's question.
I just wanted to respond to something in public comment or got too far. We are, the speaker commented that the mayor was the only one who voted to keep the community center open in Bellhaven. And actually, I voted for that as well. So just wanted to make sure that that was known before we, we lose that speaker, I mean, that, that public commenter. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Heron, at this time, do we have any additional?
Yes.
Public comment?
Do have a few more public comments here. I've just counted. We have 12 remaining, so we will close it after those 12 that have raised their hand. So at this time, the next public commenter will be, oh. No, it looks like they've left. Next public commenter is John Lee. John, you are off mute. You will have to unmute your device. Perfect.
Can you hear me, customers?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, mayor and the city councilors. First, I'd like to raise my
First, I'd like to raise my concerns regarding closing MCC once the subscription rate drops below 95%. Simple math tells us that if we do what the proposal suggests, we cannot afford to lose more than one student. Realistically speaking, people move around for changes in life and work. Under the current situation, it seems wise to be flexible and work out a solution for whatever is on the table instead of directly shutting down the schools. I think there should be other options. For example, reduce the number of days per week to run the program, reduce the cost, and look for extra resource for funding. Another matter concerns me is the operation loss of MCC. As far as I understand, MCC was running at a profit in the year 2018, but in 2019, it seems to be heading towards a significant loss. This is something really surprised me, by the way. COVID-19 only adds relatively small impact to the baseline loss. Precisely, it only adds 90K to the 360K baseline loss. I believe we need to look into the reason behind this before blindly blaming the pandemic for everything. Because although we cannot control the pandemic, we may still be able to minimize the loss in other ways. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Our next public comment is Cario Mo.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cairo, and I am a resident of Menlo Park. I grew up here and I attended high school here. And I'm commenting to urge the Menlo Park City Council to adopt a city budget that prioritizes community well-being and redirects funding away from the police. Menlo Park's history of discriminatory single-family zoning meant Black families were denied loans to live here, impacting their wealth and long-term well-being. This history is one of the many reasons Black and Brown communities are the most vulnerable to COVID-19. As we sacrifice needed investment in health and human services in favor of public safety, the police come at the price of lives. Today, I demand a decrease in funding for the police department. If existing contracts or leased police defunding cannot be discontinued now, I demand a written commitment to ending all such contracts once they expire. It's unacceptable that 30% of our city budget goes to the police, while only 12% goes towards community development. Reforming the police is not working. Policing reforms or procedural reforms cost cities like Menlo Park millions of dollars, and even cities with supposedly progressive policing reform like Minneapolis have seen these efforts be ineffective in stopping police abuse. In the last 40 years, police power and jurisdiction have expanded massively, especially in poor communities of color like Bellhaven. And why is there a response to every social problem to call the police? Mismanaged schools, call the police. Drug overdose, criminalize users, and call the police. Mental health crisis, call the police and traumatize someone who needs mental health care. Instead of investing in communities, why are cities responding by putting greater police presence and granting them managerial authority? If we deepen the police and move these and reinvest these public funds, we can uplift our communities while also reducing crime and thus increasing safety. Investing in public institutions like schools, hospitals, and libraries will address the root causes. Research shows that crime is a response to social conditions. It doesn't occur in a vacuum. So by defunding the police and redirecting money into our communities, we can reduce violent crime and uplift and strengthen communities. I'm calling for the implementation of non-police solutions to social problems, affordable housing, healthcare, and employment, all our safety issues. Instead of punitive or criminalization, we should build restorative and supportive community measures that can address these issues. More counselors, after-school programs, trauma services, and anti-violence programs are what we need instead of more police. I demand that the City Council begin meaningfully defunding the Menlo Park Police Department and reallocate those funds to programs proven to more effectively promote a safe and equitable community, such as community-based mental health services, substance abuse treatment services, affordable housing programs, equitable education, and more. I demand a budget that reflects the actual needs of Menlo Park residents. If you truly believe that Black Lives Matter, then you would work to build alternatives to policing, not just pay lip services supporting the Black Lives Matter movement. Police don't keep us safe. Strong communities keep us safe. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you commit to defunding the Menlo Park Police Department and eventually disband it.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is Sepha Santos Powell.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Sepha. I'm commenting to urge the Menlo Park City Council to adopt a city budget that redirects funding away from the police. You're going to hear a lot of things tonight, but I implore you to please keep at the forefront of your minds that a mass genocide is occurring. People have died, people are dying, and people will continue to die if state-sanctioned murder continues to occur. If you continue to allow this to happen, Menlo Park is very much implicated in this violence. The Menlo Park Police have a history of racist targeting. In 2016, an African-American lifelong resident of the Willows was pressured into having his car searched while he sat in a physically painful and traumatizing position. His words are more powerful than my own. He said, "I can't tell you or explain how violating it is to be harassed by the police, knowing you didn't do anything in your own neighborhood. No one should have to feel that way, unsafe around the police, unsafe in their own neighborhood." This trauma, this violence, this terror is a too-frequent experience for many of our Black and Brown neighbors. Today, we demand a decrease in funding for the police department. If existing contracts regarding police funding cannot be discontinued now, we demand a written commitment to ending all such contracts once they expire. It is unacceptable that 30% of our budget goes to the police while only 12% goes towards community development. I demand that the City Council begin meaningfully defunding the Menlo Park Police Department and reallocate those funds to programs proven to more effectively promote a safe and equitable community. Community-based mental health services, substance abuse treatment services, affordable housing programs, equitable education, any of the above. I demand a budget that reflects the actual needs of Menlo Park residents. History has shown that police reform is not enough. It is akin to telling white supremacists to be slightly less racist. We must take a hard look at the ways that the current system in place perpetuates violence against our communities, specifically Black residents, and come together to reimagine the role of police in our city, a role which should be nonexistent. As you can see, the residents of Menlo Park are in support of defunding the police. So if you seek reelection, you should heed their suggestions. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you commit to defunding the Menlo Park Police Department and eventually disband it.
Thank you for your public comment. We're going to return to O Lopez. O Lopez, I've unmuted you. If you can unmute your device, you can address the City Council. Again, O Lopez. It looks like you are self-muted. You need to unmute your device. Okay, our next public commenter is Sarah Goodman. Sarah, you're unmuted and able to address the City Council.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah, and I've been a resident of Menlo Park for nine years now, and I went to high school here as well. I wanted to speak in support of what a lot of other people have said about defunding the Menlo Park Police Department. Specifically, I want to focus on an issue that a lot of city councils are facing right now, which is a budget crunch and also really wanting to take care of us as citizens of Menlo Park during the COVID-19 crisis. I think that both of these issues are also really spoken to by a defunding of the police department, because those funds, which constitute 30% of our budget, can more meaningfully be allocated towards community health and human services, as well as education programs, especially now when all of these things are faced with serious adaptation challenges and when we're faced with a budget where cuts need to be made. And based on what the Black Lives Matter movement is calling for, as well as what our own citizens are calling for, I think that those cuts should be from the Menlo Park Police Department. In addition, COVID-19 has been shown to disproportionately impact communities of color. So the police come at this dual expense, both of these community health programs and of overpolicing and the racial bias issues that we've already discussed here. I felt the need to come and comment today because I feel that you all have these challenges, and we'll be able to speak to them and legislate effectively and are listening to us when we say the police do not serve us the way that community investment serves us, and we need a full defunding and replacement in order to actually speak to Menlo Park's needs. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is Carmen Low. Carmen, you are off mute and able to address the City Council.
Thank you, Judy. Hi, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you all for continuing the conversation and consideration of childcare programs in the city of Menlo Park. As many childcare programs across the county and state are under the same limitations of onsite learning that impacts full capacity enrollment, I know that many of us, including the city of Menlo Park, is concerned about the ability in meeting the state contract in the upcoming fiscal year. In hopes to provide a little bit of ease, I want to bring forth attention that there may be possibility of state contract reimbursement for distance learning in the new fiscal year due to the current COVID restrictions and the need to continue to support families and communities. Confirmation and guidance from the state awaits regarding the possibility. Thus, this is something to keep on the backburner in following state updates when considering any forthcoming budgetary decisions for the Bellhaven Child Development Center, and that there is hope and alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is Bella Cooper. Bella, you are off mute. Bella? Bella Cooper?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. I think my headphones were broken. Okay. Hi, my name is Bella Cooper, and I'm a Menlo Park resident. I'm commenting to urge the Menlo Park City Council to adopt a city budget that prioritizes community well-being and redirects funding away from the police. To begin, I just want to say I've actually noticed that a lot of you City Council members have not actually been paying attention to speakers. You're looking down potentially at your phones or at other things, and this is a dire topic, and watching our representatives look away from the camera is honestly embarrassing. Today, we demand a decrease in funding for the police department. If existing contracts regarding police funding cannot be discontinued now, we demand a written commitment to ending all such contracts once they expire. It's unacceptable that 30% of our budget goes to the police, while only 12% goes towards community development. I want to comment on the potential implementation of Eight Can't Wait, which has been discussed in multiple cities. I'm not sure if it's been discussed within your council, but I think it's important to talk about. In my opinion, this Eight Can't Wait campaign is not enough. I believe instead, Menlo Park should follow the lead in Minneapolis and defund the police department. Eight Can't Wait is not a solution. It is just a Band-Aid. I recommend implementing Eight to Abolition because Eight Can't Wait reduces police killings by only 72%, while Eight to Abolition reduces killings by 100%. Police don't keep us safe. Strong communities keep us safe. The only way to address the lethal threat of the Menlo Park Police Department towards Black and Brown communities is to abolish the police. I demand that the City Council begin meaningfully defunding Menlo Park Police Department and reallocate those funds to programs proven to be more effective at promoting a safe and equitable community, such as community-based mental health services, substance abuse treatment services, affordable housing programs, equitable education, and much more. I demand a budget that reflects the actual needs of Menlo Park residents. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you commit to defunding the Menlo Park Police Department and eventually disbanding it. I yield the rest of my time.
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor may make a comment. To the prior advocate, we appreciate your passion. We can't see anyone speaking, and we're all taking notes with pens and paper to follow up on questions later. Just from an advocacy standpoint and a practice law, been on this council for a while, insulting the body upon which you're making a request usually isn't the best way about going about advocacy, especially when you can't see what we're doing looking down.
I'd like to plus one on that, and I think Councilmember Mueller said it a lot more diplomatically than I would say it. But I would just say, like, if you're advocating for something, advocate for something. Don't feel the need to sort of like critique or criticize people. Do your advocacy, because when you set the tone in that way, then you really lose the power of what you're trying to do. And I assume you're young, and so please, please take that as some constructive advice.
And our next public commenter will be Stephanie Dupont. Stephanie, you are off mute and able to address the City Council.
Hi, City Council members. So I'm Stephanie Dupont, and I have been a Menlo Park resident for more than 10 years now. Me and my husband are taxpayers and property taxpayers of Menlo Park. And I would like to address comments made regarding the Menlo Children's Center. So I'm a parent of two children that attend Menlo Children's Center for more than four years now. We have been heavily relying on the childcare service, and we know that our kids just love attending MCC. So we're very sad to hear that in these uncertain conditions we are considering potentially closing the facilities that we have relied on heavily and the teachers that we really love and the friends that we have made there, other parents and our children's friends. So I just want to reiterate those concerns that were stated by the other parents regarding tuition rates and regarding potentially looking at other options before we decide to close down the facilities. I can for fact say that the closing and the long-term closure has had social and emotional impact on my own kids. We see it every day increasing. And so one question I also want to ask is, looking around, I see other preschool centers opening, and I'm wondering why we're waiting even until August 10th to reopen these facilities. Me and my husband are full-time working, and we are lucky that we kept our jobs, I would say. But we are also co-parenting at home, and our employers are expecting us to go back to work very soon. So these have been very hard times, not only for parents, but I think for everyone, including the kids and you as a council members, to make those hard decisions. But I do believe that in order to reopen the economy, we have to provide the right support to the community. We've chosen Menlo Park because this is a family-friendly city with a number of services that we are benefiting from, such as this childcare service, but also the sports center, Burgess Pool, and several parks and playgrounds. Thank you very much for listening to this comment.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is Kevin Gallagher. Kevin, I have you off mute and available to address the City Council.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so my name is Kevin. My comment is only moderately related to the budget discussion, so I apologize in advance for that. And I definitely appreciate you guys' time and patience. I was present at the protest in Palo Alto over the weekend in which Mayor Taylor spoke, and I really appreciated your words and perspective and support for the event and for Black and Brown lives. So I just wanted to say thank you for doing that. In a similar vein, I would love to see our city engage more fully with the protests that have been going on nationwide and have or increase the discussions we're having about race and racism in Menlo Park. Racism is a white problem, and I would love to see specifically the white members of this council and the city government just overall take more initiative on how to make Menlo Park more equitable and inclusive place. I'm pretty new to engaging with our city governance, so if you're in fact already doing that, that's awesome. If you haven't been quite so much, I'd be fully supportive of you starting to do that. I myself am a white man, so in calling you out, I also acknowledge my own responsibility to dismantle systems of oppression based on race. I know from personal experience that examining one's own role in propping up oppressive systems is difficult work, but it's necessary work, and it's well worth it. I also wanted to say, just take the time to say the words white supremacy, police violence, which a lot of people have talked about. Police violence is a symptom of a larger problem, which I understand is white supremacy. And those words scared me for a long time, but I think it's important to call things what they are, to say the words, and that's what I understand the situation to be. I would be so pleased to see our city increase its efforts to be more equitable and inclusive, specifically for communities of color and more generally just for all historically marginalized communities. specifically for communities of color and more generally just for all historically marginalized communities. I know, you know, there are a lot of other folks here said similar things, so hopefully you've taken that to heart. On a different note, I just wanted to briefly mention the county-wide curfew last week for the two nights. I know that it wasn't a Menlo Park action, it was county thing. But I was a little disappointed to see, I think that Menlo Park was supportive of that action. I know there aren't a lot of protests here in general, especially nighttime. But I found it to be pretty worrying, just in terms of the way it was enacted, the reasons for which it was enacted. And it was just kind of a sign to me that the county, just one small sign that the county values property over people. And I know that you all personally don't, and I think this specific action wasn't reflective of that. But I would hope that you all, you know, in future instances would feel supported by your residents to kind of break away from county actions like that, if something like that were to arise in the future. Thanks.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next speaker is Rose Scott. Rose, I've unmuted you. You are able to address the city council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Taylor and city council members. I have been a resident of Menlo Park for my entire life and I care deeply about the health of our community. I support my fellow residents who have called for the divestment of funds from the Menlo Park Police Department and the investment of those funds into community development, particularly our education system and childcare systems. I'm shocked and abhorred that the 2019-2020 budget provided the police department with $21.13 million, more than the amount allocated to both community services and community development combined. It is imperative that we do not continue to support this system, which is rooted in systemic racism and injustice. We must rethink our view of public safety and demonstrate our commitment to justice for all by redirecting our funds towards developing our communities, providing mental health support outside of the police system, increasing affordable housing, implementing substance abuse programs, reducing academic obstacles for students of color, and strengthening community well-being. I would like to end my comment with a quote from Desmond Tutu. If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment comes from Esther Seveng. Esther, you're off mute.
Can you hear me?
Thank you. Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Hi, my name is Esther. I'm going to try to keep these comments sort of brief. I am a resident of Menlo Park and some of us want to go to law school, so I'll try my best to maintain decorum. I'm frankly concerned about Menlo Park's history of discriminatory single-family zoning. It's meant that black families have been denied loans to live here. It has impacted their wealth and long-term well-being. Now, I don't necessarily hold each and every single one of you personally culpable, but I just want to talk about this because I'm grateful for your time and so I'm hoping that you'll be grateful for mine. This history, this history is one of the many reasons that black communities are the most vulnerable to COVID-19. And as we sacrifice needed investment in health and human services in favor of public safety, the police come at the price of lives. I am calling for implementation of non-police solutions to social problems, affordable housing, healthcare, and employment. These are all safety issues. Instead of punitive or criminalized approaches, restorative and supportive community measures can address these issues. We need more counselors, after-school programs, trauma services, and anti-violence programs, not more cops. I just wanted to read a brief testament. In 2017, a black resident of Bellhaven told Almanac News that fear of the police is an ever-present unavoidable reality for him and others in his community. He said, "Even though I try to control my environment and how I present myself, that's not going to save me. All it takes is one overzealous officer with a chip on his shoulder. They have a badge and authority." Policing functions as a tool to intimidate and harass and criminalize black communities and not a tool to protect them. It's incredibly disappointing that Menlo Park keeps choosing to wage war on its people instead of investing in safe, healthy, cared-for communities. And reforming the police is not working. Policing reforms are procedural reforms. Sorry, hold on a second. Policing reforms or procedural reforms are changes to police department protocols like implicit bias training, mindfulness in police community encounters. These procedural changes cost cities like Menlo Park millions of dollars, millions of dollars. We are just reinvesting in the same problem. Even cities with supposedly progressive policing reform like Minneapolis has seen these efforts to be ineffective in stopping police abuse. In the last 40 years, police power and jurisdiction have expanded massively, especially in poor communities of color like Bellhaven. Now, I'm sure all of you are very well-educated and know how much it takes to be able to practice law. So I ask you this, why is it that a cop can have a badge and a gun and have the authority to violate citizens who are tasked with knowing our own rights? When lawyers have to go to school for years to be able to defend us in court, why are these the people that we entrust with public safety and ensuring that we have our rights? I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public commenter is Marceline Combs. Marceline, you are off mute and able to address the city council.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marceline and I am one of those residents that have been in the Bellhaven community since 1955. I've already written the council and expressed my concerns in writing. But tonight I join you to, just to reiterate that the Onetta Harris Community Center is a monument here. This is, it is a safe place. It was a safe place. It's been a safe place. And even as our community changes with the different faces that we see, it is still a safe place. It's a place that children that live in the Bellhaven community can go to and be able to walk home and feel safe. When daylight saving time is going to be over, it's going to be dark. We do not want to have our children on buses coming from one, going to one and back and forth to different communities. That doesn't make sense. And it's, we say that we want to be a strong community. So let us implement Harambe, which means let's pull together. Let's work out some solutions where we can get this thing under control and think about the community, think about the children. As we say, it takes a village to raise a child. So now we have many children that are depending on the representatives of the city in which they live in to put them in first place. Put the children first. Where they will be able to grow up with confidence, knowing that they are a part of the community, knowing that the community respects them and cares for them. So I want to thank you for this time and hope that after this is all over, after you've gone and you've done whatever you need to do for us business of the city, you will remember that charity begins at home and spirit's abroad. And another, and when I don't mean giving, I mean love. Real love comes from, begins at home in our community. Don't forget that we never know what position we're going to be in before we leave this earth. So think about the children and give them the best opportunity for children in Bellhaven. They will be able to receive no matter where they live. So I thank you for having, allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you for your public comment. Our final public commenter I'm going to call, for anyone who engaged the hand feature after the mayor had closed public comment for new commenters, please use the question chat feature on the right side of your screen to type in your public comment and I'll be sure that the city council gets that. So for our final public commenter, it's Yuri Golani. Yuri, your mic is open.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
So hello, respected mayor and members of the city council. My name is Yuri and I live in the downtown area of Menlo Park with two children. One currently attending the Menlo Children's Center and another is on its way to join in a few months, hopefully. It's hard for me to raise the following concerns in current times as there are more important social developments affecting the country, but I have no other option at the moment. Like other parents in the city, I am worried by the various attempts made by the city to draw a grim picture first to the city council and the residents about the cost of a full year of shutdown of the MCC. And then after being debunked since daycares have reopened in California, the city draws a grim picture to the parents on the expected running costs of the daycare. We have been looking at numbers of running the MCC in past years, 2019 and earlier, and the numbers look good. They look very good. The MCC sustains itself and sometimes is even left with some slack. In a call today with the Director of Library and Community Services, we asked why the presented expected revenue was $900,000 and why the city did not present a revenue expected from full occupancy, that is somewhere around $1.2 million. He explained that they are being conservative and that the program may potentially not run in full capacity or all year long. Well, the MCC does run all year long and there are about 50 children currently waiting in line to get in. So I'm pretty confident it will run in capacity. In addition, how much contingency should be planned for? I think there is a balance that needs to be made. No daycare program anywhere, even in COVID times, charges $4,000 for a toddler and $3,000 for a preschool. And these supposed numbers are presented for a break-even scenario. This will scare away parents and potentially affect the continuation of the program. We also asked why the daycare has not reopened. Why wait two extra full months until August 10th to reopen? Summer camps for the same ages are being opened right now. How are they different? This makes it hard to ask parents as it prevents us from getting back to work and it costs the city tax money for no good reason. I question why wasn't the shutdown time used to prepare for the reopening scenario? As I mentioned earlier, the MCC generally runs at cost. The COVID hurdle is temporary. Let's keep things simple and wait it out. The temporary cost of the city, if it exists, is minimal and local in time. But the benefits of having the daycare to the city and its resident is huge. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. So once again, for anyone who had their hand raised after the mayor closed the public hearing for new public commenters, please use the question slash chat feature on the right side of your screen and I will ensure that the city council will receive your public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for all of our public comment speakers expressing your passion to the city council and to the general public and to staff about how the changes in our budget will affect you directly. It is important for our community members to speak up. It is important to be heard. So I just want to thank you. And at this time, I have a couple clarifying questions for staff and I'll start with MCC since a few of the public speakers had some questions around the cost and also the date that you expect it to open. So I'm not sure who, if that would be Mr. Jacobson or if that would be Mr. Reinhardt. It's Mr. Reinhardt. Good evening, Mr. Reinhardt.
Good evening.
So I just wanted to follow up on the question as far as why August for reopening as opposed to July?
The proposed August opening for MCC is some weeks after the proposed opening for the Bellhaven Child Development Center in order to safely reactivate both of those programs by not opening them simultaneously and thus creating that workload on the staff to try to adjust to the protocols in both locations. The pandemic continues to be a real present threat in the community. Our focus is on the safety of the children and the families and the community and reopening this critically important service is no question that is critically important and it must get reactivated. But by staggering those two start times, this helps that we can err on the side of caution and safety.
So it'll take about four weeks to open each center?
Roughly, that's the idea. In order to allow the staff time to adjust to the new protocols as well as the children, which will be a pretty big change in their daily routine, the different class sizes, the way they have to be separated into cohorts, the way they have to have toys separated and all of those things, even more difficult for children to adjust to those things, especially when they're quite young. Also, the teachers have quite a few additional protocols that they need to adapt to. It can be adapted to, but it does take time. And again, our goal would be to have the absolute most safety as possible to prevent to the greatest extent possible any infection occurring in the programs, which could potentially result in quarantining that would then shut them right back down. So we really want to be careful to avoid that potential bad outcome.
Well, that's understandable. The health and safety of the children that use the center, the staff, the parents is definitely a priority. That's a given. So the cost, I think it was Yuri brought up that the cost was estimated to make this a functioning program was around $4,000.
I think that might have been a reference to the fees. Yeah, I think he, I'm not sure where that number came from. I think he was referring to the fees currently, I think what's in the staff report is up to $3,100 per month for toddlers and $2,682 per month for preschool.
So I'm not sure where those numbers came from. I worked in early childhood education. The place that I attended, I believe the highest cost was around $1,500 a month. So I'm not sure where that number came from. Councilmember Carlton, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I have some numbers and I know where they came from. So I have a list that was provided to me. People ask why we're looking at, we're looking at notes. The tuition comparison for local preschools is roughly around $1,400 to $2,700, the average being 2,008 exactly on how much people are charging. What did we charge last year? Are you there? My thinking's.
Yeah, so I believe last year it was about $1,100 less than those two numbers. So that would be in the range of 2,000 per month for toddlers, in the range of 1,500 for preschool, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so I have in front of me Menlo Children's Center was 1,535. I was just wondering if you knew what Bellhaven was.
Let's see, I'd have to look that up. Well, Bellhaven, I believe that's heavily subsidized, so the fees are quite low for, it's kind of a different arrangement.
Okay, my question is, how much is it going up by? So you've got 1,500 and one, it's going up to?
So at MCC, now this would be for full cost recovery, which is what we presented for council's consideration. Then it would go up to $3,100 per month for toddlers and $2,682 per month for preschool.
So we would, so we would, okay, so the proposed is 2,682, I see. So we would be the most expensive. We've gone from the third cheapest to the most expensive, but we can't do that. I mean, I know other people, I know all the other numbers on this are going to change too because we're all reacting to COVID. But people are, people are trying to, they're trying to survive. Now, the numbers that were brought forward to you, I have, was given to me that the budget for 2018-19 was $675,000 and the actual was $318,000. The budget for 2019-20 is $714,000. The actual looks like it's going to be 200,000. It looks like by a few hundred thousand every year, from what we budget to what the actual is, we end up, it ends up costing us significantly less than what we budget because everything, as you said, is so conservative. So I'm assuming that since everything is so conservative right now, I'm concerned on how so conservative we're getting. And I just want to pull up another thing that somebody sent me. So I'm trying to balance too many things on here. Where they were talking about on the budget, the Big Lift Grant was counted as zero and the California Adult Childhood Program was counted as zero. We know they're not going to be zero, but the expenditures related to those were in the hundreds of thousands. And I was wondering, what are the expenditures for those? And I was wondering, what are the expenditures for those when you've counted zero as what we're getting for them? How does that actually balance out? And when we talk about being conservative, how overly conservative are we being? Because when people are really struggling, the government exists to try and help people, to keep them safe, to protect them. And moving from the one affordable refuge for people to put their children where they're going to be safe to being one of the most expensive, and I, and I get it, we don't know where the other, the other numbers are going to move. We might end up still being in the middle. But even if we're in the middle, that doesn't help the individual who's having to work the same job and has the same child and still has that same need. Their, their ability to pay isn't going to go up just because we're in the middle of a plague. So I know that's a lot to say. Let me, let me clarify my question. Uh, more specifically, uh, I'm looking at the budget and I'm looking at the actuals and I'm seeing that we always budget hundreds of thousands of dollars more than what it actually costs us in the end. And, and, and an example of maybe where we're doing that even further this year is counting zero for the Big Lift Grant and the, the child food program. And I know it's, it's hard when we haven't been in a situation like this before and we're having to make assumptions. My fear is our assumptions are, are too conservative and that maybe we don't have to raise the, the fees as much as we do. And, and to let people know, we're not cutting back the numbers because we want to. We're cutting back the numbers of children allowed because the state and the county have restrictions on how many children can be to a teacher. And trust me, I've had conversations with staff. If it were up to me, we'd open up new uh, classrooms and expand it to let all the kids in because this is such an important area. But I, I'll be quiet and I'll let you answer my question on the, the budget. Why is it zero? Why isn't that a good estimate? And how much overage do you think we're assuming in this aspect of the budget as being conservative?
Thank you, Councilmember. Those are all, uh, great observations and, and great questions. Um, I think I'll just start by, um, sort of agreeing with you about the, the great uncertainty that COVID nineteen and the economic recession has, has really caused. It's, it's very difficult to compare past years to the current situation. The previous years you mentioned are a little bit before my time. But my understanding is that, uh, the expenditures did not, uh, come true as, as was budgeted primarily due to staff vacancies that occurred throughout the year. When those positions go vacant, the money's not spent and the expenses are lower than what is budgeted. But the council, in order to authorize positions, you know, does have to budget, you know, the full amount at the start of the year. So my understanding is that.
Excuse me, Mr. Reinhardt, for, for interrupting. I just wanted to go back to Councilmember Carlton's question around why are the numbers presented in the budget as they are? As zero in one spot and expense in another?
Correct. So if you can answer that question. Yeah, absolutely. So it is not known if that grant is going to come in or when or what amount. We assume it will come in and it will be significantly less, maybe fifty percent less, just based on the fifty percent restriction on enrollment. Um, but in an effort to show, uh, council the most conservative picture for your policymaking discussion this evening, uh, we decided to fully load the expenses with this explanation that we're having right now so that you can factor that into your deliberations. That's really the reason, uh, the understanding is that we were to present kind of the full loss. So the council could have the understanding of what would be the most that it would take. Like, it will be less than that, uh, but we don't know because there's so much uncertainty.
I, I, I speak for myself here, maybe. I don't want to know the most conservative. I want to know the most realistic. Um, and maybe that's just me, um, but I don't want to overcut, just like I don't want to undercut. I, I want everyone's professional best estimate so I can make the best choices to help people, not the most conservative. Sometimes we have to be brave and say, this is our professional experience and we feel it's going to be half and we go forward. But I, I'll just close on this. You all probably know what a multiplier effect, it's, it's the dollar you put in for what you get back in, in society. And the multiplier effect on childcare is, is huge. Because without this care and the ability of people to, to work, not only allowing people to work, but also, uh, the, the children that don't go to preschool don't do as well in, in, uh, kindergarten. If you're behind in kindergarten, you have a seventy percent chance of not being able to read at grade by third grade. By third grade, if you're not reading at grade, you're in trouble. So this isn't just about a place for people to put their, their kids. This is about, and, and to let people know who don't know, because there seem to be a lot of people calling in that, that are maybe new to that, to the area. City council has zero ability to do anything about, about education. But we do have this aspect of it. We do have that preparation before they go off to the, to the public schools or where the school board has the jurisdiction. And, uh, one of the documents I got, this is from an economist in Berkeley. I know Ray was big on, on getting economists, you know, information and as we're doing this. What we're talking about with our childcare, if we cut it, would increase about eight point eight million. And for every dollar invested in high quality, uh, early care education, taxpayers save thirteen in future costs. For every dollar we spend, we save thirteen. And, and this is critical. So I, I, for, it's really funny having people really good on your case for doing something that you've said you've always going to do. Because I think Mayor Taylor and I, from the very first meeting, it was the seven, eight meetings ago, said, there's no way we're going to cut this. And really what we're doing is figuring out how the best way to make it work. And, um, I know my, my colleagues would like to speak, but I am, uh, I'm concerned about the numbers. And I'm concerned about making sure that we find as much as possible, and I've spoken to staff. I know that with Bellhaven, it's very difficult to have a sliding scale because there's a, a funding mechanism there. Uh, but as much as we can have a sliding scale for the people that can afford it to pay more and not to overburden the people that can't, I'd like for us to talk about how legally we might be able to do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton, Councilmember Nash, and then Councilmember Mueller.
Thank you. Um. I think that the reason why that, um, how it got to thirty one hundred and, um, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that's figuring everything in so that we absolutely have no subsidy of the program. So that includes a general administration surcharge and also the capital facility surcharge. And I would like to state right off, and I'm pretty sure that everyone will agree with this, that that is right now in a pandemic with the childcare is the last place we should be even discussing this. And so let's just, please take those out of the equation. Um, general administration surcharges, um, we should not be doing capital facility surcharges where we charge for buildings. If there's an elective improvement that is purely elective, then we can talk about doing that. But other than that, we should not be discussing these surcharges. I would recommend that since we are in the lower end of the scale, if we were to add five hundred dollars per student for both the toddler and the preschool programs, that would still keep us on this lower side of tuitions. From what we've been, um, given, this would be countywide and certainly in this area. Um, and it would allow us to recoup around, um, over two hundred thousand dollars and, um, make the program much more viable. Um, I agree that the costs have been way overstated. I think that, Sean, you've probably been getting it from all sides. Thank you so much, especially since you're brand new for this, to this. And also, we've probably all been getting it from the same source with all the information about, um, what all the costs are and what the real, um, the actual costs versus budget are. So, um, I, it makes sense to me to try and, um, I propose raising the tuition five hundred dollars a month. That gives it around two hundred thousand dollars more to the city, about two hundred sixteen thousand dollars if we're looking at, um, the, uh, thirty-six kids. And, um, that still is a bargain for the, um, for the parents. It keeps a good program alive. And, um, I think that we should talk about moving up the start date. Um, and we need to get it open sooner. It, it's great to try and stage it and be moving it, um, conservatively. We aren't in a time where we should be conservative about this other than about health and safety. And, um, finally, we need to, um, it is not realistic to do the ninety-five percent subscribed, um, either to cancel the program or to retroactively charge parents for an amount. Although I also think that if we do the, um, increase in fees, um, that hopefully would help offset this. So I will step out of this point.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Nash. If I could just, uh, just ring in on a couple of those, uh, things that you mentioned there, all really good stuff. First of all, the administrative surcharge, um, is not included in that, that tuition rate. Um, so ju- just to be very clear about that, that's just presented for council's consideration. Again, just to show what that fully loaded cost would be. Um, certainly it's council's prerogative and discretion to adjust, to change or, or take or leave any of the things that are presented here. And the, and the feedback so far and the feedback that we're hopefully going to continue to get is very helpful for us to go ahead and put together, uh, the program for you so that we can get, um, the center that opens and so people can get access to the childcare again. I think we all share, share that goal. Um, so regarding, I just want to be clear. I think your proposal was to increase, um, sort of the, the city general funds of subsidy uh, on the order of two hundred to two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars with the intent of, of bringing down the tuition five hundred dollars per month per student. I think that's what I heard. I just wanted to confirm that. So maybe I misheard that.
I think that that was slightly different. Um, so if we were to increase tuition by five hundred dollars per.
Oh, oh, for where it is now. Oh, for previously, is what you're saying. Not eleven hundred, but only five hundred. Thank you.
In, and therefore decrease the subsidy required.
Thank you. That helps clarify.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, um, so I do have thoughts on the childcare center before, though I do that, I just wanted to share a small diversion so that I don't, don't ever have the chance to say it in response to being the white male council member, uh, what activities I've taken over the last, uh, week and a half to two weeks. So just for the record, very early on called out both Ahmed Aubrey's deaths and George Floyd's death before they, before they reached the level of attention that they have now. At the last council meeting, if people go back and look at the, look at the hearing, what they'll actually see as the council member who questioned the chief and, uh, made the point to instruct our police department, uh, raise the issue of that if curfew was taking place and protesters were peaceful to leave them alone and let them go through our town. Uh, I did attend, uh, the Menlo Park protest for George, demonstration for George Floyd and, uh, went with the mayor to speak to the chief about allowing that protest to leave the park and go to somewhere else. Uh, and I, though I did not attend the meeting, uh, the, the demonstration and protest in Palo Alto, I did watch it and communicate with the mayor afterwards why I couldn't be there and my support for her. So, uh, and I want people to understand too, I've been trying to be very careful in circumstances like this not to speak over, uh, my mayor and my fellow council members and to be respectful of the situation, but also not, and not treat it as, uh, opportunity for political self-aggrandizement. But rather to, uh, be supportive of sound public policy. So wanted to touch on that. Don't want to revisit it again. With respect to the children's center, um, the children's centers, you know, I had a, uh, had a discussion with, uh, a panel a couple of weeks back, so I was really trying to understand this and, and, uh, was very kind enough. Chuck Bernstein was able to donate his time. I think you all know Chuck. Chuck runs child, uh, childcare centers for a living as well. And what Chuck shared with me, uh, in the panel that, that day was during the COVID nineteen crisis, he actually had put out, uh, he's, he's, he was, he's been running his centers the whole time through. He was one of the few childcare centers actually to be, uh, granted permission to do that. And he had actually, uh, put out advertisements, solicitations for more employees. He needed more people to come and work there. And in this time of this crisis, uh, there was no response. In this time of joblessness, there were no applicants to come and work. And when we talked about this issue as a council and, uh, Heather at the children, uh, I mean, at the community equity, uh, I'm forgetting the last word. But anyway, uh, the CEC, uh, spent time with Heather and Dana and also stakeholders here. The issue that really has come up, the issue why this is so important is because, uh, there just is such a lack of facilities in the area capacity and also a lack of teachers. And the, uh, the concern is, of course, if these facilities, if we were to just furlough these facilities, that the teachers would move away. And that we need the facilities, obviously, for the economy to restart, for people to have the ability to go back to work. And what struck upon me is, uh, looking at those two features, um, that Menlo Park is in a unique position in that we have childcare centers and a lot of cities don't. And it's interesting, from the discussion that we've been having, we've been approaching the problem from, well, do we cut it or do we not? And I decided to really try to think of it more outside the box and realizing that the issue that we're trying to address, if we just address it by saying, well, we're going to keep our childcare centers uh, funded and open, uh, we're actually not addressing the underlying problem. We're just taking a small piece of it. And the real thing, the real partnership here that would make a dent in that would actually be to reach out to the county and to turn our childcare centers into teaching labs to develop more, more students, more, more teachers for these students to actually make a dent in the underlying public policy problem. So I reached out today to, uh, one of the county supervisors and said, what do you think of the idea where we would, uh, reach out to the county for funding, partner with the community college, take up the same work that the CEC is undertaking and then being supportive of that, but actually create teaching labs out of these centers as a workforce development, uh, for workforce development? And then apply for grant funding, apply for funding from the county and see if we could date, take a dent out of our city costs for that. And the response was, uh, was not immediately yes, but the response wasn't no. And, uh, actually what the response was, was, uh, you need to, uh, you need to speak to Supervisor Dave Pine. This is his subject matter area and he's not here, uh, he's traveling presently, but, but reach out to him and talk to him about that. And then he'd be the one to make a fork to county. I actually do have confidence on having that discussion from Supervisor Pine, because I think you may all remember early on in this process, Supervisor, Supervisor Pine was the supervisor of the county to send us all a letter saying, please don't close these facilities. So we have the opportunity to go back to him now and say, well, we did as you asked, we're not closing them, but we'd like to partner with you and do something more with them to supplement what it costs to run them and to also address the underlying problem, which is why you, you sent us the letter in the first place. So I can see my colleagues are, aren't interested in closing the centers tonight, but I think there's more opportunity here and I think there's more opportunity to get funding to support the issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll start off by saying, uh, thanking the staff for, for the staff report and, and, um, and adding that, like, I think that some of those sort of, like, the, the information regarding surcharges actually are coming directly from sort of queries that started, uh, from the DIAS on council. Uh, and really sort of like trying to get further detail on what is the level of subsidy, uh, to, 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 to these, these programs and specifically to, to MCC. Sorry for the crying in the background. Uh, and, uh, uh, so, uh, just so that, like, again, like, I, I think as Councilmember Mueller stated, there is, there seems to be a consensus to support of, 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 uh, regarding the programs in this moment, like for the upcoming fiscal year. But there also, and, and again, not wanting to put words in anyone's mouth, seems to be an interest in exploring, like, what is the long-term sort of plan for the program? And maybe it's something as, 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 as Councilmember Mueller stated, uh, some sort of, like, teaching lab where we can sort of rely on, on, um, funding from the county. Maybe it is sort of, uh, finding a, a third-party source that, uh, that is, that runs daycare or, or, or maybe, um, is, is interested in it. Uh, and, and I think that to begin that exploration, we need the process of sort of understanding what the full costs are, right? And, and, and so that's why, because all of that stuff comes into play, um, as you, as you sort of, uh, look at this. sort of look at this, this, this program and all of the city's programs, sort of independently, you know, whether it's HR services, you know, whether it's utility costs, whether it's, you know, sort of what would be in a, you know, if it weren't a, a city, a city function, sort of rental fees, all of that stuff has to come into play, I, I think, in understanding what is the long-term sort of direction of the program. Again, I, I'm supportive of, of continuing this, this, this support. I, I am generally supportive and want to hear what some of my other colleagues think of, of council members, Councilmember Nash's proposal of raising the tuition to $500. It seems sort of random, but again, like, I have, it, it just, I don't know that there's any other sort of way to approach it. I do think that we have to make some efforts to bridge this, this gap, this current subsidy, and, and sort of a full cost recovery, which even still wouldn't be a full cost recovery as, as we've already stated, because of the, the surcharges don't get taken into account or those additional costs, would, would make the program sort of, I think, too costly for many of the families here and sort of would, would change it. And so I would be interested in exploring what's the thinking of, of like, some sort of tuition increase that, that, that provides more support from the program for, for families that, that are currently enrolled there. So I think those are all of my comments on, at the moment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. I just, I have a question. And the childcare programs, they're listed as a subsidy from our general fund. What other subsidies does the City of Menlo Park provide for community services? I'm sure their childcare is not the only thing on the list. I don't know if that's a Dan Jacobson question or Nick Pegaro's question.
That might be a question better answered by either Dan or Nick, so I think I'm going to turn off my webcam and so one of them can ring in now.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt.
Thanks, John. Madam Mayor, the answer to that question is really, so for community services programs in general, that's all of them, with the exception of gymnastics in the past. Gymnastics was not heavily subsidized. That said, many of the components of things like facility surcharges, charges for human resources and other charges that could feasibly be included were not included, but all other programs do have some subsidy. And these really follow the city council's cost recovery policy. So the, the level of subsidy is what is, is determined by that policy.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Councilmember Carlton, I don't know if your question is along the same lines, but I had a, a follow-up regarding the, the big left.
Go ahead.
And I just wanted to find out, and this may be Mr. Jacobson's question, just what is the reason that the Bellhaven Community Center is funded by the big left? Because that's a specific need, I believe.
That is the specific need. That actually is slightly outside my wheelhouse. I'm not certain with the, or I'm not as certain about the, the background on that. I would have to turn that one back over to community services staff.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Reinhardt, I believe that would be a question for you.
Yes.
And I am keeping note on hands raised.
Yes, I'm sorry to play hot potato with this, but I do believe that the Assistant Community Services Director Adrian Lee has much more direct experience with the big lift and can speak more knowledgeably to your question. So Adrian, if you would, if you mind, please.
Thank you.
Good evening. That was actually a new grant that one of our, our supervisor at the time was able to identify for the program, which was wonderful, an additional $135,000. And it's actually to bridge the literacy gap. So it was very resourceful of her and, and it was the added money for the program that she found. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd. And I have another question, and that is, the larger grant comes from the state, is a state grant. Then we have money coming in from the county as well, which I believe is what the big lift is for. Is that correct, Ms. Byrd?
Correct, exactly.
Okay.
We also have money to subsidize the nutrition program, so we serve the lunch and the snack and the breakfast.
And has there been any information by the state or even by the county regarding what funds the, the community center receives, the Child Development Center receives? Would there be any adjustments based on COVID, knowing that social distancing practices have to be maintained, certain cleaning level has to be maintained? Are there additional funds coming or is that going to be reduced?
So we just got word, actually, this past week, that they have confirmed the same amount of subsidy as we had last year, but I would caution that I've been told in the past, when there has been a state budget crisis, that they, we have seen them do an amendment mid-year, and so the, the amount per child could be different. But as of now, we are, we do have a contract for the same amount. And then I think, like the public commenter said, they may also provide subsidy for distance learning, which we're actually receiving right now till the end of this year. So we're getting their full grant amount because the teachers are providing distance learning and sending out activity packets and, and supplies to the families, which is great.
Thank you for that information. And just based that you work directly with the programs, so are, are we short-staffed? Is there an issue around teachers? Because my understanding is that teachers are ready to get back to work.
So currently, we are down one teacher at MCC. That has been a vacancy, actually, since September. And at both programs, we have vacancies with the childcare coordinator positions, which we've chosen to freeze, really in attempt to just run a little leaner. Those are really important positions, though. For all of childcare within the area, I would say in California, finding teachers is a really tough thing, especially for our location, just because the cost of living is so high. We have teachers driving in from Stockton and Turlock just to come to work, so it's really difficult. A lot of the, the, the reduced general fund costs that you see, as Sean mentioned, is because we'll have vacancies for nine months of the year. In the case of our MCC coordinator position, that position has actually been vacant for over two years. So it's really tough to find, recruit and retain qualified teachers, so we really value them.
And do you know about the program that Community Equity Collaborative provides around education and early childhood education to increase the number of teachers? And if any of our teachers that didn't have it, if they participated in it?
I do not know if any of them have participated in it. However, it is one of the groups that we fund through our community grant program that the city funds, which is wonderful. So they actually act as a pipeline to encourage early childhood teachers to come back into the program, which is wonderful. And then just as someone had mentioned, we actually have two teachers currently at the CDC who attended the CDC as children, and now they're back teaching for us.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Byrd. Councilmember Mueller and then Councilmember Carlton. And then Councilmember Nash.
So I, I would, I would support Councilmember Ash's position, what she's put forward, Councilmember Combs, and Vice Mayor Combs, excuse me, as indicated, they would support. But one thing I'm also interested in talking with you all about is whether or not you want to explore the issue of deposit at the MCC, that's right, at the Menlo Children's Center. So the idea of being a deposit of 10% or some amount so that there's the ability to understand that people are coming back and, and holding their spot. So, but yeah, I'm, I'm, I am supportive to, and the reason why I'm supportive of that is because I do believe that that tuition increase is actually just moving it to what the market rate is presently, and so that seems appropriate.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
Sure. Yeah, the big lift is kind of what I was talking about before, about the importance of this in terms of getting kids ready for kindergarten. And I just want to point out, in the staff report, it talks about the enrollment guidelines prioritize the children who are currently in child protective service cases, families that are homeless, those that are currently receiving aid. You know, these are families that are already really in need of support, especially when you're in that situation with children really needing support. And part of the provisions of getting in is that all families must be working, seeking employment, or actively completing education or job training. So it's, it's a whole program, even the nutrition, is teaching the parents about nutrition. And if you're currently in a situation where you're receiving aid, you're already dealing with homelessness or child protective service issues, I'm really not okay with $500, respectfully to Betsy, I just think it's a lot still, in particular because we've just heard that our budget, at least for, for this year, is, is being supported. And my guess is that the budget's going to be supported a lot more than is being indicated on the documents that we have. And I don't want to see us go from maybe one of the, the only somewhat affordable places to being up the scale. And beyond the scale and what happens with the other people, $500 can be a lot. No, and, and this gets back to my original question that, that wasn't addressed. I've had some people email me, and, and I'm sure you're getting the same emails as, as I am, saying, I don't care how much it costs, I just need childcare. And I have other people emailing me saying, I'm desperate, please don't make this too expensive, please help me. Is it possible, at least, I know there are different rules with the, the Menlo, as there are from, from Bellhaven, at least with Menlo, are we able to implement that sliding scale? So the people that can't afford the 500 can pay the 500 and the people that can't maybe pay 200 or 100 or, in extreme cases, nothing. I just wish there was a way that we could put in a sliding scale that might provide more equity for people who are in, in different situations but still desperately needing childcare.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Nash?
That's not a, no, wait, 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 that's, that's not a statement, that's a question. Thank you.
Sorry.
So from a legal perspective, that's fine with respect to MCC. As you mentioned, there are other requirements regarding the Bellhaven facility that does not allow for that for most of the, most of the students, but for MCC, that's perfectly acceptable. We would just have to work out that type of program. I, it would probably be in the, in sort of the form of a scholarship program, but we would, we would have to obviously come up with some guidelines.
Can we not have a scholarship program in the Bellhaven facility as well?
Well, we already do. We just can't increase fees above what they currently are, as I understand it, based on our submission of the grant applications.
Okay. So we, we cannot raise the fees in, in Bellhaven and then it is possible for us to have a sliding scale in the, the Menlo Park Center?
Yes.
Did I hear you correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's, that's wonderful to know. Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. We might be confusing the two programs a little bit. I certainly would be in favor of if we need a sliding scale, having one for the Menlo Children's Center. I have personally not heard from anyone who's said, don't increase the rates, certainly to the 3,100, but as far as people have said that they, people who have contacted me saying, please raise the rates, don't get rid of the program, is what I've heard. But a sliding scale would certainly be great. We don't, that's fine. Bellhaven, we cannot raise the rates and nor would I want to. I do have a couple questions, and that's, the first one is, if we look at the sheet that was provided by, for the Bellhaven subsidy for the Big Lift Grant, right now, it says that the Big Lift Grant is $135,000 and for revenues, and the expenditure for the Big Lift Grant is $167,014. Could I get an explanation, please?
Yes, Councilmember Nash, this, the Big Lift requires a match on the part of the organization, so that's why is, the total expenditure is higher than the total revenue in that.
Well, that does not include, so there's a Big Lift matching grant requirement, which is 15,000, it's separate from the 167,000 that says Big Lift Grant. So it's probably something like that, but that, it's not that obvious and it looks like it's not the matching grant.
I would need to look for those specific numbers. If you can give me in just a moment, I'll, I'll try to find those unless Adrian or Sean knows off the top of their head.
It's on the sheet that was circulated by staff this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Apologies for the delay there, I was just going to call on Adrian to respond to that one.
Ms. Byrd, you're on mute.
The number is associated with the match, but they, they might be a little off because one, there is a staff number that is associated with the grant. And I think with some of the benefits and things she received, it, it doesn't totally match up, but that is essentially what the two numbers are for.
So there's two numbers on expenditures, one just says Big Lift Grant and one says Big Lift Matching Grant Requirement. So you're actually saying that they're both related to a matching?
Correct.
And so bottom line, it's beneficial, I would assume, otherwise we wouldn't be taking the, the money.
Yeah, yeah, and it actually pays, it actually pays for an additional teacher aid, closing the literacy gap, which I think Councilmember Carlton had mentioned, and also just improving quality. So our coordinator last year also raised the program to the next, the higher quality level and received additional funding.
That sounds great. Do we have any better numbers than have been provided about the $1.2 million balance for the Bellhaven Children, Child Development Center? Probably going back to Adrian. Oh, hi, John.
I got here first. Maybe if you, if you could maybe elaborate a little bit on the type of detail you're looking for, we're happy to provide it.
It just, it seems like a huge, just the difference in, I just, I'm, it seems like there should be more revenues coming in. I know this is incredibly conservative, but it's, I guess, please keep us posted as you get more information. And then.
We'll have a question, yeah. Certainly the grants, you know, that's the, the primary source of revenue here. And like, for example, the federal and state grant, we're anticipating that being halved because it's based on the number of students. So, but that could change, there's a lot happening at state level, and there's potential for the grants to, you know, be adjusted against the city's favor down the line according to what happens in the legislature. So we'll definitely keep the council apprised.
Presumably, everyone's dealing with the same reduction in number of students, and if we're, in fact, the grants are based upon number of students, then there's going to, everyone's going to be struggling with this, these budget issues. So I guess, having said that, I would, I do not want to see any cuts to the Bellhaven Community Development Center program and am very willing to listen to other opinions, but. Center program, and am very willing to listen to other opinions, but at this point, I would recommend that we continue it and that we look to redirect money from the police budget toward this fund.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash, Vice Mayor Combs, and then Councilmember Carlton.
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of give my take on the sliding scale. I actually wouldn't be in support of a sliding scale. We don't have the infrastructure to appropriately validate that. Are we looking at tax returns? Are we looking at assets? I mean, any college financial aid officer can tell you that, you know, analysis becomes complicated really quickly. And if we are trying to do it based on sort of the ability to pay, then I think the benchmark is not like the $500. And the benchmark is like the $3100. It is like a full cost recovery. Like, can you pay, you know, so can you pay by whatever calculation we create, the full cost that the city, you know, city bears in providing this program for your child, and then some sort of sliding scale? And so again, for me, it becomes incredibly complicated very quickly in an environment in which we are sort of reducing staff, you know, so it's not clear to me who does this. And as a, you know, if you're a private entity, I think you can sort of do this informally, like sort of providing scholarships and, but as a government entity, there's, there's just lots, you know, procedures and specific policies we would have to follow. And so I would just be, if, to Councilmember Carlton's concern, if the $500 she thought was too much, and I don't discount that it is a not insignificant amount of money each month, like, is there a sort of number to sort of keep this clean, right? Again, it can seem a little, a little random, but just to sort of keep it clean, is there a consensus around some number of which the tuition for MCC, again, only talking about MCC, can be increased to get some of the cost recovered? And if not, if there's no consensus for any amount of money, then any tuition increase, I would say, like, I would support fully subsidizing the program at the current rates into the next fiscal year. I would be supportive of that. But again, I'm more supportive of some effort to increase, increase the tuition to get a little bit more of that, that money back, back to the city. And I would want a little bit more, at the, the risk of opening a Pandora's Box, I would want a little bit more clarity from Councilmember Nash about her sort of transferring funds from police services into other services. Is this in addition to cuts that we've already made? Or are you sort of baking in those cuts that we have made? And so again, not, I know Councilmember Carlton is next, but that is just a little bit additional clarity that I would like to get at some point this evening.
Actually, thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Nash did raise her hand right afterwards, and then Councilmember Carlton. Thank you.
So I guess the first comment about the sliding scale, I think you make really, I agree with you, Drew, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Combs. I think that, yes, the administration of a sliding scale that you mentioned does sound onerous. And so to the part as far as, originally, I was, the average preschool tuition, according to this list of 16 schools that we received, is $2,008. Adding $500 to our current fee makes it 2,035. That puts us where we've got five, five programs would be less than us, and 11 programs would be more than us. So to me, I just sort of, I did just pull out a round number, very honestly. And I'm perfectly willing to discuss another one, but it just seems like that was an easy one to do. And then there was, I sort of got to that because I was looking at the preschools and where we might fall nicely there, according to, I was essentially looking at all five GEO Kids, the Menlo Park City School District, which are on the upper scale. But then I was wondering, how would we deal with the toddler program? And that's when I thought, let's just do, my easy solution this afternoon was just doing a blanket $500 for, you know, all tuition, not, and so there we go. Actually, I think I will let others talk, and then I would be happy to give more clarity on the budgeting. But let me see where other people are, are coming. Thank you.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I think one of the things that's really frustrating in all this is that we've got too many moving parts. On one hand, we have things that are being cut by the county, and then there are other things that are having to be cut by the budget. There are other things that have to be cut, you know. And I wanted to point out that from 59 families who normally are at this, the MCC, after COVID, they're going to be 36 allowed to be there. And that's not because we're cutting a budget, that's because of the social distancing, and legally, we're not allowed, with the number of teachers, with the facilities, we're not allowed to have more than that. So we have 26 families who've confirmed that they need immediate care. Five have confirmed they're not returning. The rest have graduated. And so it looks like, you know, we've, and we've got 50 people on the waitlist. So I don't think we're going to have a problem filling up the facility at all. And you're right, sometimes it can end up costing us a whole nother FTE, just dealing with people applying for a sliding scale. I'll give you that. $500 I'm okay with. I would like to say, if there was a way that we could have an application where if it really does impact someone, if they could apply for a scholarship proactively, I don't, if it's possible to do something, or say we have scholarships up to X percent, or something like that, it just makes me feel a little bit better because I worry about the impact on people. But I do, I do understand the sliding scale is too much for the administration. And on that note, 500 is fair, but I wanted to point out that I don't want people to get confused when they see that the numbers have gone down so much. That's not us cutting things. That is the legal requirement because of COVID. And also, Vice Mayor Combs, I agree with you as well. It might be a good time for us to look at a, here we have a co-op where the management takes over, running it as a third party, or a third party running it. This might be a very good time for us to look into the possibilities of them being able to do that, as long as we have a cap on, on how much they charge to make sure that it stays not on the top end. I think that that's not necessarily a bad idea to look into.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
I understand my colleagues' concerns about the sliding scale. I will say candidly, I don't know if we do that in Menlo Park in any programs. So before I discount it, I just wanted to ask our professional staff if we have built that expertise. I think that probably goes to our city manager, many of our departments, do we operate on a sliding scale over tuition?
We do not currently do that. We could definitely develop a program if that's the council's direction, but I would agree with everything that Vice Mayor Combs has said, that we don't have the infrastructure, and it would be administratively challenging to do that. But of course, if that is the council's direction, we will do so.
And I appreciate that. Just wanted to double check. So that's fine. I'll support the 500. I think it sounds, and then I'm also still interested if people are interested in looking at any sort of deposit. But with an increase of 500, I don't know how relevant that is. And then I still, I still would like to send a letter to the county to see if we can talk about developing a teacher program at those sites and partnership to CEC and the community college, and see if we can get some county money to help subsidize these sites for that, with that, with that added purpose, since it was pointed out by the supervisor buying to be of great interest to the county.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
I agree, but we do have a long history of charging more for nonresidents of Menlo Park, because the tax dollars of the people of Menlo Park are going to subsidize this. We do it on pretty much all of our programs that we offer. So I think that is something that we should consider as well.
Councilmember Nash?
I believe that there already are differential rates. I don't know how much it makes up for the subsidy, but there are differential rates already at the MCC for residents and nonresidents. It's just all those kids there right now are for residential, are Menlo Park residents.
I just want to make sure we don't lose that as things move on.
So I guess I'm, so I would love to hear from my fellow council members about what their thoughts are for on the Bellhaven Child Development Center. Again, I do not want to lose the program, and in the spirit of that, this is something that really does help the community and the social fabric, and helps in so many different ways when you invest in the childcare, as Councilmember Carlton has so passionately described. I was suggesting that this was an additional, an additional redirection of money from the police budget, in addition to what we already have, hoping that we have grossly, actually, that's a bad word, hoping that we have over, that we've been extremely conservative, and that the money would not be as big, there wouldn't be as much money needed when we actually get the real numbers in, and hopefully that at some point we can add more kids. And so again, the deficit that would not be as great. But yes, I was actually suggesting that that 1.2 come from the police budget, which still is our largest budget. And with the idea that it really is, it is helping with inequity and our, the social infrastructure.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. And just to follow up on that, I'm having a difficult time that childcare is even on the list. The last place that we need to cut from our youth, whether they're two months old, two years old, or 12 years old, without services provided by the city, it diminishes quality of life, not just for the children, but also for the parents. Space is needed for everyone to be able to live and thrive. And considering the history of Menlo Park, the history of one area specifically in Menlo Park, and what has been done there, there needs to be a better effort to provide equity, inclusion, and equality, as opposed to eliminating anything, any type of service. Regardless of the income level of any area in Menlo Park, everyone pays some kind of tax, whether it's a sales tax or a property tax, and everyone deserves some type of service in exchange for the tax that they pay. And that this childcare shouldn't be on the list from the beginning, as far as I'm concerned, since we were using a citywide tiering system that was supposed to be equitable. What's the complete opposite? And so, so I don't care how much the childcare costs. The fact that we are subsidizing it, to me, is a part of our responsibility as a city to give something back to community members, especially if we know that there is a system in place that prevents certain access to high-quality education. That means we need to invest a little bit more to make sure that students have access to high-quality education. So if this, if we needed to provide $2 million out of our reserves to cover the cost, then we do it. But the fact is, the, at least the Bellhaven Child Development Center is covered primarily by a state subsidy and a county subsidy, not a city subsidy. And so for me, that's, that's what the discussion should be, is that this shouldn't even be on the list. It shouldn't even be on the list. Nothing for children should be on the list. This is not the first place that we go to to make cuts to our budget. The second piece is, I am interested in cutting the police department's budget by 20%. Would I go after their budget in order to fund the childcare program? We shouldn't have to. Shouldn't have to choose whether it's police services or childcare services. To me, it just, it doesn't make sense to choose between the two. A question that I asked a few weeks ago was if the Command Center for the Police Department was already purchased. So, has it been purchased? That was $500,000. So to me, that's money on the table if it hasn't been purchased. We can reallocate those funds if our children are a debt to us. That's the way we look at it. The other piece is that I still want to talk about the community center. It was voted to be closed. And here we are, we're going to cut childcare services, and we're going to close a community center in an area that has been underserved and under-resourced. Again, makes no sense when we're talking about citywide equity. Why was it even on the list? And so I hope that we can revisit that. Community members have expressed their concerns about it, not that it being closed, especially now that the project has been extended to March of 2020. So that would be roughly eight months that our kids wouldn't have our kids. The kids in the District 1 wouldn't have access to community services. So I'm not sure how to bring that back. Do we need to talk about it again? And Councilmember Nash, I see your hand up.
So yes, I actually would like to talk about that again, and another item that we had, I'd like to bring another item up, but I was waiting until we finished with childcare. But yes, I totally agree that that's an item to be discussed tonight.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs, and then Councilmember Carlton.
Yeah, so my comment is, it was actually a question for you, Mayor Hill. So are you supportive of the idea of increasing the tuition at MCC to $500, as suggested by Councilmember Nash? Just sort of that specific thing. So I can just, for my, see where we are, and that, and that, with regards to that issue?
If that's affordable to the parents that use that system, I'm supportive. If it's not affordable, then we need to figure out something else, if that's going to price people out. So again, I believe we have enough resources to supply whatever we need in our budget for our children, whether they live in District 3, District 1, District 4, District 2, District 5. So I don't want to price people out because we're in a financial crisis, especially when it comes to childcare services. So does that answer your question?
It does. Again, I just want to sort of, on that issue, see that, like, try to get staff, what, I mean, because again, there is like, again, I'm, you know, if we want to sort of reopen some of the other, revisit some of the other things, again, I'm supportive. I just wanted to know, like, whether there was some very specific direction we could give staff on that, that, that piece. And if not, then we can't, you know, it's not, it's not there, there's no consensus, but, which is totally fine. But that's what I was just trying to do before we sort of, you know, possibly moved on to these other items.
All right. Thank, thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. And Mr. Jacobson, did you have a follow-up on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I was just going to make the comment that the direction that we're seeking is essentially how to reactivate, and rates charged would be one component of that. But if the city council desires to continue childcare, I don't know that that was necessarily intended to be a, on the chopping block, so to speak. Really more the question is, how do I identify the resources to continue?
For the clarity, I'm not sure who had their hand up first, Councilmember Carlton or Councilmember Mueller? Councilmember Carlton?
I was just going to point out, as I read the budget, and I confirmed with our city manager, we have $190,000 in surplus in the budget that we have, that we put together right now, and Dan's nodding yes. She said that there was something else, I think it was another $300,000, that hadn't even been accounted further. So we have almost half a million dollars in surplus from the budget cuts that we've done so far. I would, I actually, two things. One, that helps fund the childcare, because, Mayor Taylor, I thought you were very eloquent, and I'm sorry if I get very emotional about the children's care. It's just something I feel isn't, it isn't something that we're subsidizing, it's something we're investing in. And I can't say that more clearly and enough. So we, I just wanted to point out to everyone, as we're moving forward, there is almost half a million dollars in the budget surplus right now that we can put back in. that we can put back in to childcare. I also spoke to Starla about if we have a surplus, what programs can we keep available in Onetta Harris? Which ones are, because she felt very passionate that it was also a matter of safety, particularly with the elderly. And it would have to be something programmed where there would be a number of people allowed in and it would be supervised to keep them apart and all this. And whether we have a six-feet-apart exercise program or something, surely there's some programs, there's some classes, there's something we can do to keep things programmed and, and let people begin to live a slightly more normal life with some exercise and services. And I'm not even going to guess what those would be. I was using that as an example. But I, I think it's possible for us to do that. And as I say all this, I want to be really clear about one thing. I want to make sure that the Onetta Harris Center is treated in the same way that Ariaga's treated from, from either side. What happens in Ariaga should be available at Bell Haven. What happens at Onetta Harris, that we should have that equity between the two, the two services that the city provides. I see Starla up, so would you like to address that?
Yes, so if I could just clarify, the, the additional savings would come from the agreements, the tentative agreements that we've received from Ask Me and SEIU to not take a pay raise in July. And so there is a staff report that was posted to the agenda page on our website yesterday that shows the savings of approximately $400,000. So with the $190,000 that the, that is the plus side of revenues versus expenditures, plus that $400,000, the council has roughly $600,000 if those agreements are approved by the council in two weeks. So I just, I do want to make one more point, though. And that is, and, you know, we are in sort of two different emergencies right now. We have the COVID-19 emergency and we have the fiscal crisis. So it is, it is not currently the intention to reopen either Ariaga or Onetta Harris because of the COVID-19 crisis, not because of the budget crisis. We, we know that the most vulnerable populations or vulnerable experiences for spreading COVID-19 is congregate behavior. And so until we know more, we, the staff is not planning to provide congregate opportunities in any facility. Now, that could change in two weeks. I would be the first to acknowledge that we know more every two weeks and will change what, will change that direction when we, when we find that out.
Thank you. I have a question I asked earlier, Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson, you left, is about the Police Command Unit. Has that been purchased? Can we reallocate those funds if they have not, it has not been purchased?
Okay, so I did learn this afternoon that we have purchased it, but we can recall that purchase, if that's the council's direction, at the cost of 10%, which is, so it's, that would be around $50,000 because the original cost was $500,000. And if that's the council's direction, we'll certainly do that. I just want to make it clear that the source of funding for that vehicle was a special revenue that we received from the state and would not be eligible to assist with some of the other financial issues we're talking about. It would be eligible to be used for the purchase of new police equipment.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash and then Councilmember Mueller.
Thank you. Could you clarify, I believe that of the $500,000, $200,000 is coming from the police funds, which is already, and that is not, cannot be used elsewhere, but the remainder is coming from the general fund and then was to be repaid. And so that money that was from the general fund could be used other places.
Well, ultimately, the general fund would be made whole. So we were not factoring that in. Right, that's true, right. That's, that's true.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
$600,000. First off, I want to thank SEIU and Ask Me. I wanted to get that said before we move on since this has come up because we're spending the concessions already. I wanted to ask Starla, is this $600,000 inclusive of the revenue for the $500 increase in tuition?
Well, no, the council's not taking action on that. But I believe.
Assuming we do, what is that dollar amount?
I think it's $215,000 if it's fully subscribed over a 12-month period.
All right, so that's, so that brings us to $815,000. Well, actually not really because we don't get it back unless people are in the, actually using the center, right? So it comes back later, it doesn't come back while we're carrying it. So what I was going to suggest is, so I just, for the record, like, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the 500. What I, what I was kind of hopeful is, we could do is, I know that we have things we want to put back in, but what I was, after we talk about those little things, what I was kind of hopeful that we could do is we could just talk about want is one time. So there might be a few things, but I was hopeful, just in the interest of time and also because I don't, I also am a little concerned that I, I'd like to give Starla and staff the flexibility to manage the city. And so when we talk about, what I'm, what I'm interested in doing is talking about what is the dollar amount that we would pull from reserves this year? And then ask Starla, our city, our city, our city manager, to put together a hierarchy of the services that she'll turn back on as COVID, COVID-19 would wind down. So that we would understand that from a policy perspective and also understand, basically, you know, with that reserve money, you know, or back up how the reserve money, after everyone talks about the things they want to add back in, how the, just sort of like the prioritization of how that reserve money is going to be used without prescribing that to her. But rather, staff has seen, our professional staff in the city has seen a number of cuts, painful cuts through this process. They need now to figure out how to run our city with those cuts. And so the idea that we would say, from a policy's perspective, we're very interested in the hierarchy of how you're going to reactivate services. And there's a policy consideration for us to look at that and weigh in on that. And, and obviously, you know, we're very interested in how that reserve money is going to be used, but go forth and do, do good and make our city run. So I'd like to leave it, I'd like to just talk about that reserve money at a macro level and ask them to put those, really that policy together and then, but empower them to go back to job of running the city. And there's some, there's little things, I actually am interested, ironically, interested now. You know, before, when we talked about the portal, the Police Department, I'll just confess, I did not fully understand the conversation that you mean. And I thought the portal we were talking about at that time was, was actually an enhancement to a system in place. I didn't realize, the way it was described that evening, I didn't realize it was actually getting rid of, getting rid of that platform. And I wouldn't have supported that then. And actually, in light of everything that's happened, I do think an enhancement to that portal, that portal for, to keep track of stops by race is actually appropriate right now. So I would, I would support doing that. But I, I would, I would basically want to say to staff, to our professional staff, I'd like to see the hierarchy of what you're going to turn on and what order as COVID-19 runs down. And then, and then hear how you're going to, and then come back to us and tell us the policy of how you're going to spend that, that reserve money with a focus on, on not, with a focus on not funding CIP projects that are nonessential at this time, but deferring nonessential CIP projects. But then basically power them to do, we've got through the hard part. We made the cuts. How much money are we going to put back in and let them do their jobs with?
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton and then Councilmember Nash.
I agree with what, what Councilmember Mueller was saying. Just to move this along, I would like to make a motion that we officially keep, make the decision to keep open the Bell Haven Childcare Center and the Menlo Park Childcare Center. We raised the rates for the Menlo Park Childcare Center, $500. And we, I would like to know if, leave it open for the families to let us know if that's really crippling for any of them. And we can revisit, we can discuss how to deal with that because I don't want anyone to lose their childcare because they're on the edge right now. But anyway, that's my, that's my motion. And as we go forward, as we have the staff to do so, it's a good time to look at maybe outsourcing this or seeing who they want to do to a management running it. But predominantly, I'd like to see it open. And as part of that motion, I would like to see it open sooner than August 10th. And I don't want to pick a date arbitrarily. I would rather staff come back and say what they're capable of safely because we're talking about lives. If they can do it safer, I would love to see it done a month early. But I'll let staff let us know how safe they think they can open it. And that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Can I make a friendly amendment to include the letter to Supervisor Pine requesting no less than $1 million?
Amen. Yes.
From the county?
I have, I have a question.
I also had, oh, sorry.
I have a question. Before we send a letter, is it possible that we each individually can actually go and visit the county's program to see how it's run? I am confident in the, in MCC and the, in the Bell Haven Child Development Center and what current staff have been doing with the program. So I don't necessarily want to see it run by a different, a different organization until I look at the organization because we may be providing a more stellar service.
I'm actually not looking at advancing the service, but adding to it, amplifying it and putting in a teaching component for other, for other teachers.
We have a teaching component now.
Mayor Taylor, I'm trying to get money from the county in order to pay for more teaching taking place at the facility as a count, as a partnership with the county.
So are you against me looking at the program first before I agree to saying, let's send a letter to Supervisor Pine saying we want to participate or consider participating in the county's program? I would like to go look at it before I agree to it. Is that a problem?
I think that we could ask him and then we could always decline and decide we've changed our mind.
I'll stick to what I said. I will go and look at the program and see what it offers. I'll be glad to join Nancy McGee and she can give a tour of the facility there. I know that the county took over a program in East Palo Alto because of mismanagement. So I'm sure they're capable of providing the service. But I know the service that we have here in Menlo Park and I would just like to see what the county offers before I agree to a letter.
I'm still asking for the friendly amendment.
Support the friendly amendment.
Well, I'm asking the maker of the motion.
So I, I think the, the middle ground is actually my motion. My motion was to also include looking at other partnerships and whether or not it is run by another group or whatever, to look into that. That was, that was my motion. So Ray, does that meet, that, I know that's what, that includes what Mayor Taylor's asking for. Is that not part of, or Ray, are you saying that you want to move forward with? I, I thought what you're saying is an investigation as well. Is that not what?
We could bring it back on June 16th. I'd like to, I'd like to move forward quickly while we still have a budget issue. So if we could go ahead and invest in between now and June 16th, investigate it so that when we go to supervise, Supervisor Pine, it's actually timely and within this budget discussion as opposed to remove from a budget discussion where we actually had to make these decisions. I think it's actually doing, due to its timeliness, both in terms of what the county is doing in their budget and what we're doing in ours, we have a better chance of actually getting within their process at this time as opposed to if we wait and they are deeper into their budget discussions and deeper into their own cuts.
Councilmember Nash, you had a follow-up?
I'm actually concerned that we get the program up and running as quickly and efficiently as possible. And I'm concerned that if we start looking at other ways to, basically, if we start looking at third parties or anything like that, that's going to distract and we have less staff now to do this. And so I want to just focus on getting our programs up and running right now. I'm not sure how that leaves the funding piece, which, but I also hear that we've got tremendously strong programs. And while I'm very interested in the funding, I also do not want to do anything that will disrupt those programs at this point. So.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, thanks. So I, I think if we're, so Councilmember Carlton made a motion and I seconded it. And I think that's where we're at. But definitely, correct me if I'm wrong, Judy. I generally am supportive of the idea of sending a letter, but I actually would prefer for third class not to be part of the motion. If there is some concern from one council member about that, then, then I would just, just prefer to, that it not be a part of, of moving forward and until, and, and something that we as council members can explore on our own as far as sort of what, what next steps for the program looks like. So that's, so that's what I would be comfortable with as the secondor of the motion. But I don't know the extent to which that aligns with Councilmember Carlton's motion.
I'm okay with that, with that motion. But I would like to give direction to us, staff, whoever, to, to look into this further. We, we've got a little while before, before this is all final and it gives us a little time to, to maybe even do a tour, do what we need to do. I don't even know if they're doing tours because of COVID at this point. So I'll, I'll agree to stick to the original motion. But with, with the side note, with the direction that I think that Councilmember Mueller's ideas is a good one and definitely worth, we should look into it. I won't make it part of the motion now, but I think we should look into the opportunity there.
As this issue is really.
Is that okay with you, Drew, as a secondor?
Yeah, that's okay.
Because I think it's important for us to investigate this because I think it could be something that brings us a lot of money and enhances our service.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I think this is a really important issue, guys. I think it's going to be a really important issue when we explain to the public here in Menlo Park, to the level that we're subsidizing this, that we're also looking for the county to participate in a deeper way to take care of the public problem, public policy problem that actually has caused this issue. Otherwise, what we're doing is we're running two centers without really contributing more to the underlying problem. I also think, again, the timeliness of the issue is incredibly important given that all, all the public entities around us are facing similar budget issues. And finally, what I, I will compromise with you all, but I'd like a date certain that'll come back for a decision of whether or not we'll officially reach out to the county. So is there a date certain that you guys can all provide me that we will discuss this matter again? No, anyone willing to agree to this? I'm seriously pressed to abstain on this issue without investigating more funding sources.
No, I think, Councilmember Mueller, that, that's a completely fair, fair request on your part. And my only question is what, what date? I don't have a calendar in front of me, but instead of like, bud, you know, what meeting does it make sense to sort of have this comeback? But I think it's a completely legitimate request.
Councilmember Nash?
So I'm all in favor of looking for more funding. One of the things that we received back on May 18th was from the Childcare Partnership Council with an offer that they would be glad, this was Sarah Kinnahan, who's the coordinator, and she said that she would be happy to help with both the guidelines and with looking at available financial projections and funding. So I guess, and I think looking at, to the supervisors is a great idea, too. I'm just concerned to the extent that it, how it might change the program. So funding, yes. Seeing what it does to the program, I, I want to learn more first as Mayor Taylor.
But just from a practical standpoint, asking the supervisors to look at this issue with us doesn't mean that their initial response is going to be, yes, here's the money. There will have to be a program scoped. There will have to be discussions with the city that would require the scoping of that. There would have to be transmittals created both at Menlo Park and at the Board of Supervisors in Santa Clara County. There would have to be program creation. This would not happen simply with the letter being sent. There will be process that needs to accompany that. With any process, there needs to be a first inquiry as to whether or not people are willing to even have a discussion.
Again, I am concerned about the staff that we have. Is, the money is good, that to the extent that it distracts us from getting up and running and doing what we need to do, I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned that if there's been an issue in, would just that we make sure that it would be a step in the right direction.
How would we, how would we even be able to find that out with the supervisors if we didn't ask them initially if they would be willing to have a discussion with us about it? That's, I'm, this is what I'm confused about. How would we even know or be able to evaluate that if we don't ask them officially to have the discussion with us?
So if that's the case, Councilmember Mueller, then we need to have letters ready for everybody that we're interested in having a conversation with. So I don't think that we should limit it just to one. Councilmember Nash just brought up something, just brought up something that, someone that was interested in it. So, and if you want us to sit and give you a date as to when we can go and look at whatever is available at the county, we can do that on our own time and then follow up with you and let you know. You, your ask was that it came back by June 23rd? Was that it, that we would follow up with you?
What I would, well, there was a discussion that we wanted to go look at other county programs before we asked the county if they'd be interested in having a discussion with us to explore these issues. And my point is we can ask the county to explore them with them and then explore with them and discover all of that. But right now, at this moment, we are at a juncture where both we and the county are doing budget process and want to get into their process. So if we could, I mean, my compromise would be, can we, can we ask that this be brought back to us within the next two months? Is that enough time for us to decide whether or not we want to ask the county to explore putting together, putting together some joint programs or some way of joint support of this, of our childcare centers through this crisis? To somehow also, to also amplify a solution to the reason why we are saying to Menlo Park residents, we need to subsidize the issue to the extent we are, when other cities don't have such programs.
I think one of the challenges when it comes to early childhood education, it has been grossly under-invested, which is the, the problem. It's grossly under-invested, which is why the need is so high. And so I understand where, where your perspective, that the perspective that you're coming from as far as looking to the county to look at a partnership, it makes a lot of sense. Right now, I'm thinking about how we can get everything open for, to serve our residents at the moment. And I do appreciate having time to look at the county services. So I feel like you want us to commit to you right now. And I'm, I'm not going to commit to something. I will go and look at their program. But I don't see how a few months is going to change the circumstances here in Menlo Park specifically.
Yeah, so I'm not asking, I'm not asking you to commit to the idea. I'm asking you to, to, to allow us to ask the county to explore the idea with us. Not asking you to commit to it, just asking to commit the idea of having a conversation with the county about it.
Councilmember Carlton?
Have a, have a suggestion. I, I think it's a good idea, actually, Councilmember Mueller. I, I think it's a really good idea to, to look into. And, and I think two months isn't unreasonable. I was going to say one month. But I, I, as I said before, part of the motion is that we open it as soon as possible, and I don't want anything to slow that down. So if, if Councilmember Mueller, if you want to work with me and, and we go meet with the county and we bring something back, if you want to do it with Mayor Taylor, if she has time, I would like to see us, whether as a, group of people from the council or whether it's individuals, I would like to see us move forward on getting more information on that. And, and what Councilmember Nash was talking about. That's kind of part of the process. And I was thinking of really focusing on that after we get it open because I want to make sure we actually get it open because it was explained to us that there is going to be some procedures and things that we have to go through in the training of the teachers for them to know those protocols. But I also know that there are, in these things, windows of opportunities that close if we don't move in a timely basis in terms of partnerships. So Councilmember Mueller, I'm happy to work with you on this together, or we can all do it as individuals. But I agree, I'd like to see us move forward to investigate the opportunity.
The issue, guys, is that unless there is a letter from the city of Menlo Park saying to the, to the county, we're interested in exploring this with you. The county has its own budget issues right now and all of its, and COVID-19 and all of its own priorities. And if I'm the county manager or I'm a county supervisor and I have Ray knocking on my door, I'll say, who'd you talk to at the city Menlo Park? Well, I talked to my colleagues, but they're not sure yet if they're interested. Well, why should I spend my time and political capital on this right now if you, you don't even know if your city is interested in it? I got a million other problems. The practical reality is it's either important to, that we're interested in talking with them about it and exploring it or not. But it's going to, we, you know, for us to say, you know, for us to, there's no way. Like if we just, if it's like, you know, me and Kat knocking on the door right now at this time with everything happening and saying, well, childcare is really important to us and we subsidize it, a few of us are interested. I just don't see it. I really don't.
What if, what if we look into it after the childcare center is open? And that way we don't draw staff or, or any time away from, from slowing it down. Would that, I see that as something good.
When do you think childcare center is going to be open?
I hope July.
Well, that's if child, so that's if COVID-19 doesn't spike in the next two weeks, right? But the budget for the county will be done by the end of June. They might have some sort of continuing resolution where they are like, but the fact is if we don't, and we're not saying that we need to be in their budget, we just need them to, we just need, we just need enough, like a couple supervisors say, we're interested in it. So there's a placeholder in a budget that size.
Excuse me for a moment. Councilmember Nash? And then we can call for a vote.
I was actually going to ask if we could get a rereading of the motion that's in front of us.
Hello, members of the city council. So the motion that I have is a motion by Councilmember Carlton with a second by Vice Mayor Combs to officially keep open Bellhaven Child Care Center and MCC, increasing MCC tuition to 500, open safely sooner than August 10th, and to include looking at partnerships and funding.
Councilmember Nash?
I think there might be one word that needs to be changed and that's not increasing the tuition to 500, but by 500.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, so motion.
So can I get a friendly amendment that will have the discussion with the county prior to that? Can we, is there any way that you guys will agree to having, that we will have a discussion on behalf of the city with the county before, before August?
My, my, my reason for, for thinking that it's not an unreasonable ask is it's just a discussion. It's not an agreement. And if we don't like it, we can walk away. I, I totally agree with it as, as long as we make sure that it doesn't pull staff away from, to slow down the opening of the center. And I, can I get my colleagues to agree that, that, that we can at least have the discussion with the county? And with the proviso that it doesn't look good, we walk away.
Councilmember Nash?
I would love to discuss this on June 23rd or June 30th rather than tonight.
Guys, it's, this is this important to me that I, I'll abstain on the motion, but if we're not going to be, if we're not even willing to say that we'll have a discussion with the county about contributing funding to this, then I'm probably just going to, I'm not going to vote against you guys on it, but I'm going to abstain till I know that we're actually going to really investigate supplemental funding. Because for me, for us to say we're going to investigate supplemental funding, but then we're not even willing to like ask the county to talk to us within two months, kind of means like we're not, because they're the biggest entity that we would go talk to.
And that I understand, Councilmember Mueller. And I believe that there are other options available as well so that we're not committing to just one area and also addressing what your concerns are. I believe that Councilmember Carlton agreed that we would talk about it. I, I don't think the discussion is that we don't want to talk about it. It's just that we're not going to make a friendly amendment to take the action that you want us to right in this moment. But it's not that we don't support it and we don't want to consider it. It's just we're not doing it right now. But we're willing to have the discussion, not just about the county, but also about other areas as well. So and if you want to abstain on your vote, that's okay.
I don't think it's unreasonable to say that we'll have, we'll, we'll start that discussion with the county by August. I don't. So it's, it's, it's June 9th.
Well, maybe the county wouldn't be the option. Maybe we would look at the option that Betsy talked about. I don't want to commit to one.
They would say no, or we would say no. I'm not making us commit to one. I'm just saying, will we commit to starting the discussion with the county to explore this by August?
Okay.
Would you be, would you really say we talk to various groups about, about potential partnerships by August? And not necessarily marry us to the county? Or do you think, you just said that they were going to do their budget by the end of?
I, I do not understand why the idea that we would want to explore this with the county by August is like a black ball idea, like to the concept. I do not understand why we are picking one party, the biggest party with the most resources that's already engaged in childcare, that is already engaged in funding the CDC, that is already like, who, who sent us a letter and asked us to do this, why we're saying it is somehow, we cannot talk to them between now and August to find out whether or not they're interested in. I don't understand why that is like a concept that is a non-starter.
It's not that it's a non-starter. We just, we, we're looking at this a little differently than you are. Councilmember Nash?
I actually was just going to ask for staff's recommendation, whether they, what their thoughts are on this. Basically, is this going to be distracting or not?
I, I think we'd need to, we'd need to look into it a little bit more, but I, I think it's also true that if, at one level, if we're simply going to be asking the county to help fund a program that they've already demonstrated great support for, this is the time to pursue that. I, I would really like to accept it as a friendly amendment, and I would really like your, your support of my colleagues because it's just talking to them. And if it's not, and if we don't like it, we can walk away. We can talk to other people at the same time. You know, we can, we can investigate what, what our options are, but my worry is if we don't do it now with the county, that, that window of opportunity might close.
When is our next council meeting?
The 23rd, I think, or they seem to be every Tuesday now, probably next week.
Do we have a council meeting next Tuesday?
We've been, we've been trying to set one up, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to accept the friendly, friendly amendment to at least have a conversation by August with the, with the county to, just to have a conversation.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I mean, I honestly don't know where we're at, at with all this, but I, I think at this point that there is a, a fundamental disagreement and any resolution that comes tonight, I think is going to come with sort of hurt feelings and people moving off of a position of which they're, they're committed to. And, but, but I think, okay, well, we'll just, so again, like I think that, like there is, there is some concern about this, this, this letter or some direct communication with, with the county. And, and I don't think we're going to bridge that concern tonight. And so again, like, given that's the state of where we're at, I just want the cleanest motion possible and to have a, a vote on that. And the, you know, the, the looking at, at MCC 2.0, whether that's additional county funding. I think I would, I just think it, it's, it's important at this point to just sort of separate up. Because, because we've come to an impasse where there, there just is, is, is this disagreement about this, this outreach to the county? And, and, and I don't, I don't think we're going to move off of those positions. And so for me, the default is to revert back to what is the cleanest, what is the cleanest motion with regards to this issue?
Well, I, I'm not voting against it, but I'm going to be abstaining. And I'm not, my feelings are hurt. I just think that position I took is the right public policy position.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
I'll, I'll stick with my original motion and call the question. However, I would like to ask, and I think Councilmember Mueller is behind me on this, I would like to ask that this be discussed at our next council meeting because I think there is an urgency issue. I'd like everyone to go away and, and, and maybe do their own little research whatever into the issue, but I would like to be able to vote on, on that or at least discuss it next week. And it has to be agendized for us to vote and discuss it. And I don't necessarily need a grand staff report. The city manager said this is the time to do it. So I would like to not lose too much time in discussing and moving forward. I understand wanting to keep it clean tonight. Let's vote on it. But I would like to discuss it next week.
I'm supportive of that.
I, I just don't know how much work we're going to be able to do to look into it and generate a staff report by Thursday or Friday. Maybe we don't need a staff report. Maybe we can have our own. That's fine.
Yeah, I, I think if I can just.
Childcare study session.
I, I, I think the work and the work is, is to be done by the council. And, and I don't, I don't think that there needs to be. I mean, again, there is concern from the council. And so I think the council, we have the obligation to go out and get the additional information before we need. And so I, I think.
My, my big concern, guys, is look, my big concern is right now, if we go to the county and we're not, we're not unified in wanting to explore it, I just don't think it's taken seriously. Like there's only so much, like imagine where all of us have been during our budget process. And if someone came to us from another jurisdiction and said, well, I got a couple people on my, I might want to talk to you about it. A couple people don't. He's like, hey, we got a lot of other things to, to, to focus on here. So.
And Councilmember Mueller, I'm hoping that we can be there at the next meeting, but we're not, we're not there tonight.
That's fair. I appreciate that. And my feelings aren't hurt. I just, I just really feel strongly. This is the right thing to do.
Councilmember Carlton, did you have a follow up before we vote?
Nope, we're good.
Thank you. So I will restate the motion by Councilmember Carlton and a second by Vice Mayor Combs to officially keep open the Bellhaven Child Care Center and MCC, increase MCC tuition by $500. Try and open sooner than August 10th safely and to include looking at partnerships and funding. And not a part of motion, but as a part of the record, adding a county discussion to the proposed June 16th meeting as a regular item for council discussion, no report from staff.
Do I, do I need to make a, a note in the motion that if someone's having serious financial issues with the $500 to let the city know? Do I, do I need to make a note in the motion that if someone's having serious financial issues with the five hundred dollars to let the city know? Or is that more policy?
I believe that would be more policy to return to council with. An update on the impact to users. So having that, roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton.
I.
Councilmember Mueller.
Look, state.
Councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passes with Councilmember Mueller abstaining.
To be clear, it wasn't a vote against abstaining because I think we should be talking to the county. And just asking if they'd like to explore funding and, and application of programs.
Okay, our next item. Where are we? Mr. Jacobson.
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may, so one of the, the discussion on childcare reactivation was one of the points that staff is requesting direction for the proposed budget. But there are a number of other points that do need to be addressed. One would be the direction on desired changes. If council does not wish any other changes to the proposed budget, that one doesn't need additional action. However, the U U T also needs to be discussed, just to clarify staff's understanding. And then the last would be identifying resources for childcare reactivation, given that the required subsidy exceeds the amount that was. Found by either the small surplus that exists changes to personnel or the five hundred dollar increase in tuition rates.
Thank you. And I need about a three minute break.
Mayor Taylor, you may call the meeting back.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So we are still in our budget hearing and it is about ten ten. And we have one additional item on our agenda. Councilmember Nash, you raised your hand, two more items on our agenda.
So I would like to reconsider two items on the budget. And one is the P L S system. I do not think now is a prudent time to be withdrawing from that system for numerous reasons. I can go into it or I don't. Well, basically, I think that we received a letter from the director of. The executive director from the Peninsula Library System outlining a number of items that. We would lose if we were to withdraw. And I think that it's just right now in the midst of the crisis. And given that we can't withdraw for six months likely. And our library director now has additional responsibilities. I think that. Now is not, and. Our residents are leaning heavily on the library. I think now is not the time to be withdrawing from the system, and it's something that we could consider in the future, but just not right at the moment. And actually.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash.
I'm sorry, the other item that I want to discuss is the Anetta Harris Center, Community Center. And given that we have. That it will not. Need to be vacated until March and the fact that we had never considered the Ariaga. What was happening at Ariaga in parallel with the Anetta Harris Center. And so I'd first like to discuss the P L S, but I don't want to lose track of the, that I'd like to discuss the Anetta Harris Community Center as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. I'm not sure if everyone else on the council saw the letter from Carol Frost. From the Peninsula Library System. Mr. Reinhardt.
Just making myself available in case there are any questions about Ms. Frost's letter. Just briefly. The proposed reduction was in response to just the budget crisis that we're in. Far more impactful than withdrawing from P L S are the proposed reductions to library hours. And in fact, the reduction in library hours and staffing makes it more difficult in many ways to remain in P L S because there's quite a bit of staff workload involved. In shipping those extra fifteen thousand books out of our community to those other libraries. Related to my expanded responsibilities, which I'm quite grateful for. There would be no impact really related to that. We have excellent staff at the library who would be handling that transition. So again, the more, it would be far more, the far more impactful reduction is the reduction in library hours.
I have a follow up question, Mr. Reinhardt. In the letter, it says no withdrawal can occur. Because there was, I think, a six months, six months. Heads up to say we want to pull out. That's one part of my question. The other is that there's potential for the cost to be reduced on what we pay annually.
Yeah, so the second part, the proposed reduction in cost, I believe is on the order of ten thousand dollars, so minimal at best. And regarding the six month. Notification period, we believe that does not apply due to the extenuating circumstances of the emergency, the pandemic force majeure. The impracticability and impossibility of fulfilling that notification period in light of, you know, just the funding not being there. Should council, you know, authorize that production?
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller, and then Vice Mayor Combs.
My question was similar to the mayor's, but just more direct. How is it that we see a cost savings this year if we can't draw?
Well, we believe that we can withdraw, actually, for the reasons I just cited. So we don't believe, we don't believe that the agreement is. Defensible under the current circumstances, at least that notification period, it's impracticable and. Due to force majeure.
That's, is.
Can we have the CD?
This should be in a closed session discussion, so I don't want to, I don't want to ask further questions on it, but I do have. I'm, I am interested to hear how that works. When. Because. I think. My memory of contract law is that there is some element of impossibility to perform. And given the dollar amount. Not sure it's impossible for us to perform, it's a volitional decision. But I'm, I probably need to learn more from my, from my city attorney on this issue. But regardless. I am interested to hear my colleagues' interests, just discussion with respect to the subsidy and also their subsequent concerns on the issue.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, so I think my, my question to. Mr. Reinhardt is, is a little bit sort of more academic. You know, to your argument is that, you know, ultimately Menlo Park contributes more to the system and that like. Again, more people request books from. From our library system as part of this, this consortium than people. Who carry Menlo Park library cards receive from other members of the consortium. And, and I imagine that like, again, we're not the only one as part of this that's in that, that situation. So why isn't there like, from your perspective, why isn't everyone in our position looking to cut this? And, and, and remove themselves from, from this consortium? Why isn't sort of, why don't we see or hear about this with regards to other, other cities doing this at this moment? It seems like Menlo Park would be the only city. I know that the, 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 the city college system has sort of made changes to its arrangements with P L S. But as I understand, it's still, it's still a member to some degree. And, and so I'm just sort of trying to, you know, understand why isn't everyone saying like, yeah, this is a bad deal? Since the main argument is that this is a bad deal for Menlo Park. Why aren't other communities saying that this is a bad deal for, for them? And similarly, looking to, to remove themselves from this?
Well, in short, I think every community is different. They have different concerns and different needs and different budget constraints on them. I will say that there may also be the difference of just the experience of the staff involved. Staff who've worked in other library systems that don't have this arrangement whatsoever. And can, you know, maybe have a little bit more practical experience with the benefits and drawbacks of it.
Councilmember Nash.
Thank you, so I guess one of my other questions is about all the different advantages that were outlined. From the network, which would cost us about thirty five thousand dollars according to them. To the database manager, library support. The. All of the different secondary resource sharing platforms that I know residents have. I have had a number of residents who have contacted me, like at over a dozen who have contacted me, all just very, very concerned about us leaving. P L S because they are using all these other, these different sources. And in addition, in here, they say that we actually, Menlo Park residents actually borrow about. Thirty percent more items than we loan out. So I guess I'm just wondering why at this time would we? Would we do this and what hidden cost, you know, what other costs would there be that actually? Would make it so it's not really that good a decision financially or from the perspective of residents?
Well, just in short, it would certainly save the city a pretty substantial sum of money. And all of the benefits outlined there are easily replicable.
But we have to go out, we, we don't.
We could, we could get them for less.
Has there actually been any effort to do a side by side comparison? I assume there has been. Because we know that up. Because we know that upfront, it would, it was going to be in this coming year, I believe it was going to be a $140,000 benefit to us. But then, obviously, it's offset by the additional charges that we need for the network and for people to do a lot of this work. So I, I guess I'm.
Yeah, I think the main ongoing savings, just right off the top, is not, is not having the additional layer of administrative overhead that's present there and having another separate system overlaid on top of our own, performing some of the same functions like paying invoices, for example, or just working with those vendors that are listed there, which we could easily just negotiate with directly as opposed to through a third party, which layers on administrative overhead. And there's others, but I know there's a lot of other material on the agenda tonight. And I know we spent a lot of time on this a couple of weeks ago. So I'm really cognizant of not taking up too much more time. But I'm happy to answer any questions, of course, to help you make this decision. Small to.
Councilmember Nash?
I will just state, I'm not in favor of leaving at this time.
Is there any follow-up on the PLS system? Councilmember Mueller?
I'd like to revisit the item in closed session. Have a discussion with the, have a discussion with the city attorney with respect to issues raised by the letter we received.
Thank you. I support that.
So could I just, this is Cara Silver. I just wanted to clarify, did you want to go into closed session this evening? Or, or should we calendar that for a later date?
Calendar.
Thank you.
Thank you. And there was one other item that Councilmember Nash brought up, and that is revisiting, keeping the Annete Harris Community Center open. Was there any, Councilmember Nash?
Well, I guess, from talking to staff, it actually sounds like they do not feel that it's ready, we're ready to open up any of the community centers or, in fact, any of the libraries. So what concerns me is it seems that we're really treating the Annete Harris Center differently than any of the other congregate spaces that we have. And that does not, I, I think we need to bring everything up in sync and decide what we want to do with these bases if we cannot open them at this point. How should we be handling this?
So I think that's a fair point. I mean, as part of the COVID-19 crisis, not the fiscal crisis, or a combination of those two, I think the council could give us direction that if one community center opens, that they all are open. So if Ariaga's open, then Annete Harris is open and vice versa, and the gym, gymnastics, not gymnastics, gymnasium center as well.
Thank you. Would that change our layoff list?
It would have budget impact, and we'd have to come back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mueller, and then Councilmember Nash?
Yeah. So my mind just went to a logic game and was like, okay, but wait a second. Does that, are there some programs that are COVID-19 dependent that would be treated differently, paying upon facility? So, so if we say, so I'm curious. I'm just trying to think in my head if, like, a gymnasium is in the same COVID risk in terms of what you're looking at, in terms of a congregate center that would be doing senior programs? So I would, my concern, so I, I want Annete to be open. I voted for it to be treated like the others. But I also am concerned about applying a hard and fast rule. Applying a hard and fast rule that would say we're just not opening anything. If, what I would say is, if the situation COVID allows opening of a facility, that there not be, that the decision not be made citywide. So if we're opening Ariaga Center, and we're opening, and we have at Annete or at the community center, that programs, like programs, not be happening at one place and not the other. However, but that's not facility dependent, that is program dependent. So if there are programs or services that can be offered, that they, they be offered equally in different parts of the city, but not that, but so. And I think that takes care of that concern for me.
Okay. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll add and sort of clarify, and as one of the council members that did vote to close Annete Harris, and so that the record is straight, like, my understanding is that, like, we treated it differently because it was, it was not similarly situated. It was in a different situation in that it was scheduled to be closed because it was going to be demolished. And then the, the debate was around, like, the logic of, of opening it on a short timeframe rather than engaging more fully in, in this process of transitioning those services to other sites. And so that's how I, I approached it. Now, I do know that, like, the timeline for when the site will need to be vacated for construction has changed, and that certainly is, should have an impact on our decision. But again, you know, to clarify how, like, I approached it, it was, again, based on that analysis that it's, it's, it is not in the same situation as, as other sites in the city and that it is scheduled already to, again, to be not available to residents for, for, again, for its demolition. And so, again, like, we can, we can have a debate whether the fact that that's been pushed back means that we should revisit this issue. But at the end of the day, there is still a, a very specific timeline for which services can be offered at that site. And, and again, like, we can make this trade-off that it's, it's the 10 months or the eight months or the seven months or however, has value. But, but again, the, there will be a point in the not-too-distant future where the site will need to be closed, and it will be closed for, 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 for some time.
Councilmember Nash?
So, yes, I agree with you, Vice Mayor Combs, that that was my assumption as well, was because it couldn't open and it was going to be demolished in December, so it was going to be closed anyway. That was also the premise of my decision. However, I never looked around at the fact that Ariaga is also closed. And I guess what my question is more broadly, when are we going to be able to open the gyms? When are we going to be able to open the libraries? And how should we be thinking about those programs? And whether or not we, and how we handle them in the budget, given that what I have heard from staff is that they will not be open at least till October? And so it just, it makes me question it. And then, in addition, the fact that we now have three more additional months of the Annete Harris Center being open, and we don't know whether that's going to be pushed back. That's what really made me question all of the workings. But I guess the other piece of it is just to make clear to the community, citywide, to all the communities, that gyms are not open right now. So all over the city, we are not running any of the programs. And we do not, I guess I'd be interested in seeing what staff says when we have any idea of being able to open those. And then the other decision was that we decided to cut libraries 25%. But in fact, they are not open either. So I don't know how that all, they're still running services, so perhaps that's different. But it actually seems that, given that schools are open, the Bell Haven Library may actually be open more quickly than the Burgess Library. So just how does all that factor in? Or is that getting, finessing too much at this point? We've, are too far down the road to further refine it?
A great observation, Councilmember. There is a little bit of a distinction between maybe the library, which is currently offering curbside pickup and some other services. But certainly, public access to the building in, like, an unrestricted manner is certainly a little ways off. October is as good, I guess, as any. It really is tied to the phased reopening set forth by the state and definitely the county health officer. And so it's still not yet known. Gyms are, gymnasiums and some of those other congregate spaces are projected to be a little farther down the road. However, we've seen reactivation occurring a little bit more rapidly than they were projecting a few, a few weeks or months ago. However, the situation is still quite fluid and could change. So, you know, the safe bet for safety is to anticipate that no public access to those facilities through at least October. But the situation does change from week to week. And so, you know, I think maintaining some nimbleness and flexibility is probably our wisest course of action.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Are there any other follow-up questions or comments on those two items? Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so a question for staff. If we were going to revisit, like, the decision to, to keep Annete Harris closed, like, how exactly does that look? Like, how does that need to be structured? Is, is that, is that possible? And I guess that's a question for, for staff. Certainly, obviously, it's possible, but, but how, how does that, that need to work from the council?
Well, maybe I should allow the city manager to weigh in on this. But my initial thought would be that it would be approached similar to the pools and childcare, you know, as the opportunity arises related to health orders being modified. Then council could potentially, you know, tackle those programs as, as those opportunities make themselves available.
So I, I think Sean summarized it really well, but the bottom line is, and this is, is that we're going to have to keep having these discussions over the summer. It would be really helpful if the council could adopt the budget. But I think we'll be back in August to reevaluate. I mean, it's possible that we'll be in a position within two months that we can open all the recreation centers. But we don't think that we can do that today. So things will change.
Is there a, a plan that staff is working on to reopen? So is there something, is it the same that the library services did to be able to provide what they do now? Is there a, a plan for reopening the community centers, both Ariaga and the Annete Harris?
We're working on plans, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mueller? We're on mute.
Sorry. I was going to say, guys, guys and gals, my esteemed colleagues, how do you guys feel about just picking, like, a reserve amount, an amount from reserves, putting together, like, our wish list of things we'd like to revisit? And then just asking staff to come back with, professional staff to come back with what their plan in terms of hierarchy and train services back on? And then also how they, what they plan to do with the reserves, just policy level? So like, for myself, I do, I do support, I, you know, I still support Annete Harris opening it and the community center opening at the same time as facilities at Burgess. I do support, I actually do support a further enhancement of the transparency portal to include, to include stops by race. I actually think that when we have the discussion about Santa Cruz app, which won't be this evening, if it moves forward, there'll have to be a budget set aside for that. So, but at the outset, I feel like we're at the point now where it's like, okay, what's the, what's the extra money that we're gonna, we're gonna pull out of reserves for this? And, and then how much, how much, you know, how are we gonna allow staff to go about doing it? I'm fine with just saying, create a hierarchy at a policy level, let us see it, what gets turned on, when, what's the, the plan for turning things on? And then also give us a prioritization, how you're gonna, now that you know what all the cuts look like and you have this much money coming back in, what, what's your prioritization in adding money back into the budget? Like, because I think that at a department level, they're all been internalizing what their cuts look like and like, how do we make this work? And they're all gonna, once we allocate the amount of money coming back in, they're all gonna sit down around the table like they do every week after a meeting and hash out where they think the money needs to go just to make the city run efficient. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
I agree with what Councilmember Mueller said, but I want to pivot back to, to me, it does not feel right to be treating the Annete Harris Community Center differently than the Ariaga Rec Center. And I think that we should either decide to open, to not open, but leave both of them in the budget or to not leave both of them in the budget. But to me, we should be doing this in parallel.
Yeah, that, that's what I, I said. So.
And, and just, just for clarity, which is not the current state, which is not the status quo, right?
Correct. And I voted, as you did, and Kat, to close it. But I think that right now, we don't have parity and we need it.
I'm, I'm supportive of that.
So what's a dollar amount that people are comfortable with pulling from reserves?
Councilmember Nash?
Don't we first have to decide on the others? Because that sort of affects how much we need to pull?
What others?
Well, we have to decide, well, right now, we've got, Annete Harris has been defunded and Ariaga Rec Center is funded. And I think we need to make, to put those in parallel.
My apologies, I thought we just did that. So I thought there was agreement. I think, I saw everybody's hand say yes. I saw Kat shake her hand, yes. I saw Drew say he was in agreement. And I don't think, so neither Mayor Taylor, I have changed our, changed our votes on.
Does that mean we are now refunding Annete Harris, which then sits there with Ariaga for five months? Or does it mean we are defunding both? That's what I wasn't sure of. Yes, I think it sounds like everybody's in agreement, but which way do we go?
So I have a follow-up question for Mr. Jacobson, based on the changes. So where are we? We had a somewhat of a surplus earlier. Are we in debt again? Where are we financially?
Not a mere extremely close. I think that perhaps to summarize some of what I think I heard in the last few minutes, perhaps allow staff to, to go back and sharpen our pencils and make sure that we are not being ultra-conservative on some of our estimates and just refine everything and make sure that we have taken another look at things. If council does desire to use some nominal use of reserves in the event that we are not quite there, that direction, I think, would be sufficient for our purposes. But that, that would be, that, I think, would round out the discussion if council wants to continue discussing, though I, of course, wouldn't want to stand in the way of that.
I have a follow-up. So if we are allocating a certain amount of funds or the reserves to cover whatever remaining debt that we have, but we wanted to look at using some of the reserves to, as Councilmember Mueller brought up, just looking at some, something in the near future that we may want to fund. So do we need, we need to give you that exact dollar amount tonight?
I, I think that general direction is sufficient for, for now. Just really. Just really, it's, it's the question of whether or not council desires to use reserves. And then I think that we can take a look and identify where those reserves would go toward the budget, primarily sort of which programs they would support. And then, as councilmember Mueller suggested, potentially the, the sort of next up lists and what those might cost.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Combs and then councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, just following up with Mr. Jacobson. You said it would be enough to have staff direction, excuse me, council direction with regards to willingness to tap into reserves for a nominal amount of, for a nominal amount. And I just wanted more clarity in what you thought of as a nominal amount.
Vice Mayor, I would say this is a six figure number, a moderately small six figure number or lower.
Member Mueller and then councilmember Carlton.
I support that. That's where I'm at. I support that. I just wanted to verbalize it. I support saying, go forth, do good, bring us back the numbers. I support reserves and also, but would, I very much like to see the hierarchy of like what gets turned on and what order. And also the prioritization of like where reserve funding goes. And candidly, for me, I'm, I'm okay giving a little bit of cushion above where we'd be to balance the budget from reserves. Because I think these cuts, it's kind of like when you cut everything like crazy like this, there's gonna be some sharp edges and corners. And I'm kind of interested in giving a little bit of cushion for management efficiency and smoothing the edges so things can run.
Councilmember, I wasn't sure if it was councilmember Nash or councilmember Carlton had their hand raised. Nobody?
I just had a, I just had a quick clarifying. We don't know when it's gonna be open again. We hope it's gonna be, I hope it's gonna be open in October. I keep reading these, these reports saying that there's gonna be a, a second wave in September. How are we gonna guess? Or is, or we have to guess how much money we need with regard to guessing when it might be able to open again? I, I was just wondering how you were gonna address that. I'm in support of doing it. I'm just trying to decide, or not decide, try and understand how, how that amount of money is gonna be determined.
Yes, so councilmember Carlton, what we plan to do is come back to you sometime this summer, within the first quarter of fiscal year 2020, 21, having new information and being able to give you updated estimates on, on all of this and potentially change direction. Again, understanding that the budget is a living document and will need to be amended probably in the following fiscal year more than in typical years.
Okay, thank you.
Were there any other clarifying questions for Mr. Jacobson? And I believe we have one additional question to answer, and that has to do with the user, the utility users tax? Do we still need to have a discussion on that?
Madam Mayor, the only discussion would be if council desires to change the rates, staff understands the desire to be to retain the temporarily reduced rate at 1%. So unless there is different direction, that would be what we'll, we'll prepare the budget with.
Okay. Was there any follow up from, from anyone else on council regarding the utility users tax?
So Madam Mayor, if I may, just one final thought.
Yes.
And so just to recap, staff's understanding is to reactivate childcare as early as possible to increase the rates at MCC by $500, to maintain the temporarily reduced utility users tax, to treat the various recreation programs in OHCC, the ARC and the gymnasium, the same. And that council is comfortable using some small amount of one time money in order to balance the budget if necessary. Is that a correct understanding?
Yes. Councilmember Carlton?
I just wanted confirmation. It's my understanding that, that the general public does have access to OpenGov, is that correct?
That is correct. That it is open to everyone, every Menlo Park resident, every US resident, everyone who can access United States internet.
Great. So if anybody wants to look and see what we're doing in the budget that is public and transparent for them to see?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Everyone is aware of that.
Yes. Okay. So councilmember Nash, you're welcome. Councilmember Nash? On mute?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment again about what councilmember Mueller said earlier about staff sort of taking the lead and deciding how to now manage this. But just wanted to reiterate that on CIPs, I, I'm still a little bit confused about where we are on CIPs and want to make sure that we are deferring things that are not essential at this time. And I'm thinking, for example, of tennis court resurfacing. And don't want to start discussing it. I just want staff to know that I believe we are trying to defer non-essential items at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Jerome Robinson?
So although the council did spend considerable talking, at time talking about the CIPs, no direction was given on CIP.
Councilmember Mueller?
The good news is we can come back to it with the balanced budget, find money in there. So I don't think we necessarily have to take it up tonight, but there's money to be found in the CIP. I did, I did want to say that I do support the mayor's request for discussion on the command, the command center. Now, we have, I'd like that to come back to us before it's too late. I wasn't excited about it when it did, when it appeared before us to begin with that evening. And it was a bit of a leap of faith. And the reason why I want to talk about it again is to be clear for our, for our chief is, in light of our current financial condition, I think it's worthy of having that discussion because there's money coming from, from the general fund. But also because I remember that night, I really remember that night saying it was kind of like taking from Peter to pay Paul to get the thing. Because we can use those, we can use those dollars to get other stuff that is essential later on. So I'm happy to have that come back. And I look forward to CIP discussions in the future, probably near future.
Thank you, councilmember Mueller. And I believe we are closing our public hearing at 10:49. And the natural progression of the meeting is to move to regular business. But at this hour, we will be pushing these items to another meeting. Councilmember Carlton?
Please, 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 can we do the swimming pool tonight? There's so many people that are on the edge.
It was in the consent calendar.
Okay, good. It was also listed again for discussion. And I just wanted to make, under J3. And I wanted to make sure that that is, that's good to go.
Councilmember Mueller?
Madam Mayor, would it be possible for the next time that the Santa Cruz Avenue item comes before us? Even though we didn't get a chance to talk about this evening, to have included in the staff report for next week, this, the chambers plan that they put together so that we can actually, potentially that evening, give staff direction based on that at the council. So implying, just because we are lagging now behind the county's reopening of outdoor dining. So I would just ask it be agenda is that way. We don't want to do it that night, great. There's more work to be done, great. But let's empower ourselves if we want to do stuff to do it.
Thank you. And yes, and I wanted to follow up with city manager. Are we still doing a study session with the chambers?
Well, the purpose of the study session was to talk about opportunities on Santa Cruz and, and then separately talk about a task force with the chamber on business reactivation.
Okay. Okay. And thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
I do want to give a shout out to Glenn Rojas and David Johnson and Brandine and also for, for really for all the work they've done on this. And also to Dana Hendrickson, who went out and did a ton of work on this as well to try to be helpful to the subcommittee. So they, they, they really been in a lot of work to try to get stuff. And I, I'm so fortunate that we didn't get a time to get through it. But hope, but if it has to come back as a study session, it could be a study session in the consideration portion of the agenda so we can study it, but also potentially take some actions that evening. So, thank you.
Yes. I'm excited because it's nearing summer and a great opportunity for this project. Councilmember Nash? You are on mute.
I just wanted to second what has been said about Santa Cruz Avenue because we really need to push this forward. Our restaurants are ready to, to go. And there's work that needs to be done to get this going. So we need to make a decision as soon as possible so that they can get, get started. And then on J2, I just wanted to request that for the vehicle miles traveled thresholds, that we actually bring that to, that gets brought to the Complete Streets Commission. And so we can get their input from the commission prior to having a final decision from the council.
So I'm not sure if there was going to be enough time because I believe there's a June 30th deadline. And currently, there isn't. I'm not sure if it's possible. That's my understanding. Is that, that's correct, Starla?
I don't think it is possible. If we're gonna meet the July 1 deadline, we can just comply with the state's guidelines and then alter them later, our local ones later if we want.
So, councilmember Nash, did you have a follow up?
Yeah, I just, I would request that we try. If we can't do it, that's fine, but that we try. I don't think we should miss the July 1 deadline. But I do think that that is, you know, this is why we have commissions. And I understand that there's a lot going on. But it's, this is something that we need to do this. And if, it would be very beneficial to have the input from the commission. So I would, I would request that we try. If we can't do it, we can't do it, but let's try.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And at 10:55, we will be moving all the items that we didn't discuss this evening to our next meeting or subsequent meeting. And thank you for getting through this process. And get some rest. See you next week. Bye.
I think councilmember.
Councilmember Nash?
Too late. I thought we were going to do councilmember reports quickly. And I was going to mention that we were trying to.
Before you make your report, it doesn't, I have to wait to see which councilmembers we still have on.
Okay.
I see three, so we still have a quorum four. So we still have a quorum if you'd like to give your report.
You have two minutes.
Two minutes, I'll say it in one sentence.
I'm just kidding.
Bringing forward a resolution in support of Black Lives Matters at our council meeting next week. And I've talked to the mayor and our city attorney about it.
Thank you. And my quick, my quick councilmember report is, we had an SFO community roundtable meeting last week. The, the airport has launched a new app that is on the city's website where you can track all the flights. You can make complaints about noise. You can actually see everything that's going on. It's great. So check it out. Now, no, councilmember Mueller?
I was actually just waving and hiding a cat because she's back. I cast a work across. But, but nonetheless, I have a couple of requests into the mayor about some other things happening at council. But I haven't had a chance to follow around those things yet. So we'll wait to, wait to do a report on those. So.
Councilmember Carlton? You, you are on mute.
There we go. Sorry, I apologize. Just as I was leaving the meeting, I heard you start speaking again. So it took me a second to get back on. What, what did I miss?
Councilmember Reports?
Oh, great, thank you.
Councilmember Nash?
If we're really doing these, just that you and I attended, Mayor Taylor and I attended a housing roundtable with Senator Hill and had a chance to discuss some of the legislation that's going on. And actually, we didn't get all the way through. Everybody, all the cities gave updates. And we actually didn't get to discuss the legislation, but hopefully that will follow. And there was a Stanford Community Resource Group meeting, the first one since the pandemic. And we discussed the annual report. And there's going to be a Stanford Community Plan update that they're trying to figure out how that, what that's, what's happening there now. And I should be able to report next month on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, you guys may recall way back when we had the discussion about the Stanford Roundtable. And actually, I have since discussed it with the mayor. And actually, I actually am making a recommendation that we switch back and let the mayor, and not let the mayor, but have the mayor sit on that roundtable to address equity issues as they come up with the roundtable. So I think that's the appropriate thing to do. I believe the council, I believe that they, that our colleagues will keep me well informed as to the issues taking place there in a timely manner. But because the, it's that, that roundtable is touching so many things on the region, I think the mayor is an important voice for equity in that discussion.
Thank you, councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Carlton? Councilmember Carlton?
Sure, I wanted to point out, I was on a roundtable call with some people that were opening up restaurants in Europe. And they were talking about best practices and what worked and didn't work. And I just wanted to throw this out there for us to discuss as we bring back next time, the, the discussion about restaurants. They were saying the thing that worked really, really well in Europe is that every restaurant had one of those things that takes your temperature. And before anyone was seated, they had their, their temperature taken. And one person from each table gave their name and, and phone number or email so that if it turned out the waiter, someone in the kitchen came, came down with COVID, they knew how to contact the people who'd been there to let them know that they might consider being tested. And so I thought those were really interesting things that they say had worked really well in Europe. And I wanted to throw that out there. Not necessarily for discussion now, but just for people to think about. I especially like the idea of taking people's temperature before they sit down just to make sure. And even Googled how much they cost and they're available and affordable. So I just wanted to share that with you all.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Okay, on that note, we are ending right at 11:00.
Night, guys.
Good night, everybody.
Are we really leaving this time?
Really? Yeah.
Yes.